Six oh one, calling this meeting in order for cordial.
Councilmember Casarelli.
Here.
De Penya?
Here.
Graziano? Graziano, Nutari? Robel?
Here.
Mayor Mahan?
Here.
Sunshine House?
The June requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting is published in the July 6th edition of the Star Ledger and in the July 9th edition of the Bellville Times. The notice that changing location of meetings was published in the Thursday, October 22nd edition of the Star Ledger and Bellville Times. A copy of these notices have been posted on the Bellville Town Hall on tour and a copy is on file in municipal clerk's office.
Pledge of allegiance. Just going to remind everybody, please mute or silence your phones. Next item in the agenda is item four, approval of minutes.
Not at this time, Mayor.
Next item, item five, report of manager.
Good evening, everyone. I would be remiss if I didn't stop my managing report by wishing our councilman very happy birthday today. Kelly, happy birthday. Few items that I'd like to cover first to the members of the council, we did send out some emails. But our finance team is participating in a best practice requirement with the Department of Community Affairs. This is where we fill out the survey and based on some of our financial practices and some personnel issues and other items of bidding and advertising committee going out for RFPs for proposals. It all gets graded by the Department of Community Affairs. This report goes in on November 2nd. Highest grade you get is sixteen or sixteen plus. We feel that we will be in the sixteen plus range. And what's good about that is that titles us to grants and other opportunities that the state offers. So that is completed on November 2nd. This past week, we rolled out the Bellville Home Improvement program. The first step was to register contractors. This is a great program for residents in Bellville because it allows improvements on your home at anywhere from ten to twenty-two thousand dollars. There's no age restrictions on qualifications, but there is an income qualification. So as an example, if you were a single person that just bought your first home and you were making less than sixty thousand, you would qualify. If you were a family of four, roughly eighty-five thousand. A family of six, roughly a combined income of ninety-six thousand. But these are grants that you do not have to pay back if you live in a house for ten years longer. Or if the buyer, if you sell your house and the buyer qualifies, there is no payback. So the first step in this program is to allow for the town to register local businesses, whether it's plumbers, electricians, roofers, window people. So there's an application that they would come to town hall, fill out, we need a copy of the insurance. Once we build our database of contractors, then we roll out the second phase and that's where residents can apply for these home improvements. And you would have to use one of the pre-qualified contractors. Again, it's ten to twenty-two thousand dollars and it's all, there is no interest on it and there is no payback. Where does that money come from is always a good question. And it's a state program, but the program, the money is generated from development fees. So as an example, between two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty, the town collected seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in development fees. That seven hundred and fifty thousand goes into a trust account. Doesn't go into the operating account where we spend it on day-to-day operations. This goes into a trust account. So right now, between seven hundred and fifty that we already collected, we also have another three hundred and fifty on the board. So we have, we'll have over a million dollars as development fees to go ahead and to roll out these programs. So again, when a developer comes into town, there's certain requirements that we look for. And again, to take some of that money and to spend it on homes just increases the quality of homes in Bellville and that's just a plus plus. Talking about grants, I'll just use this opportunity just to give the mayor and council and residents just a quick update of some of the grants that we have received this year and some of the grants that are pending that we applied for. But some of these grants, some of these grants are only one thousand dollars and as high as a million dollars. But as an example, in October of twenty twenty, we received a fourteen thousand dollar grant from the Department of Justice. That is a bulletproof vest for our men and women in the least of them. We've also received a one point three million dollar grant from the Department of Justice. That is to maintain a certain level of manpower on the Bellville Police Department. So we're obviously, we're very happy to get one point three million dollars to provide police personnel. Some of the, again, some of the other grants that we applied for and received, we received a thousand dollars for a new soccer grant program. We received ten thousand dollars for the Essex County Census. As you know, this past October was our ten-year census deadline. We received ten thousand dollars to perform the activities to get the count as accurate as possible. Some of the grants that are still pending, that we're waiting to hear from, that we have not received confirmation would include public safety equipment for both police and fire. That's in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars. We have a safety and secure community grant, again, that's sixty thousand dollars. And then also, we applied for our DOT street program. That grant alone just was in street improvements, that's five hundred and sixty thousand. We haven't received that yet, but those are pending. And I think one of the, something I would like to point out tonight for this first time as a acting director of Public Works, Bobby Welter is here. To my right, Bobby's been doing his job. Bobby's been a longtime employee. For those of you who don't know, Billy Gilvin retired after thirty years, so Bobby has some big shoes to fill. But I see, but Bobby has been a long-term employee of the Public Works and we wish, not only wish him well, but we anticipate some major, major improvements. And hopefully you all get to see them as well. So that is my brief report. I know I'll be available for questions later on.
Thank you. Next item in the agenda is report of mayor. Some things we have here are gonna overlap, so I'm gonna briefly go through them. I want to start my mayor's report off by, Mr. Charlie Marcker, happy birthday. Thank you for spending it with your extended Bellville family here today. Also, I think I saw Ms. Lamborello, one of our board members. She's actually the president of our board. I did watch the Board of Education meeting last night, saw she was honored for her achievement as master board member. So congratulations. We now have a master board member in Board of Education. Dr. Tomko is superintendent of the year. Looks like the council has to step up a bit, I think. But congratulations to you. You'll notice that we are starting the meeting today at six o'clock, as we have always done historically for the last two and a half years or so. Only during COVID, when we were not having live in person, did we go to five o'clock. And the thought behind that was, well, nobody could be here anyway and the public had to submit their questions in advance for joining us live. During the, actually, now at that point, it was just questions in advance. So because questions had to be submitted in advance and the public was not allowed to attend because of size or capacity restrictions, we moved the meeting an hour early to five o'clock. Now that the public is now welcoming back and we're in a large capacity, we are back to our normal six o'clock meeting. Often, as you probably know, we call the meeting in order, we go into executive session for a half hour. So we don't really start the business side of the meeting until six-thirty, quarter, seven, seven o'clock. I know there are those that want the meeting later. I will say, as I watched the Board of Education meeting yesterday, a resident stood up and complained that the meeting was too late, starting at seven-thirty, that he prefers it to be earlier. So we find that six o'clock traditionally works because usually we go into executive session and don't really start the business portion till after six-thirty before so. Some news, I know we spoke in last meeting and you knew that I've been talking about this hospitality bill. That bill was put on hold, which is good for us. It's now going to reemerge in the assembly as amended. I will say, I'm not a hundred percent thrilled with the amendments, but we did get a victory whereby any renter of a facility owned by a nonprofit like the hospital will have to pay tax going forward, which is great. I'm not happy with the fact that four or five years of our litigation could be ended automatically if and when that bill is passed, but that's an update on that. As the manager mentioned, the census is over. We did end at sixty-eight point nine. I'm not sure that number's a final number because we know we had census takers out in the field and there is a delay in calculating those, that data. I will say that we did surpass our numbers from ten years ago. It was our goal to hit seventy percent. And if it was allowed to go through October 31st, which was originally thought, we certainly would have hit that number. But we did do a good job in surpassing the number from ten years ago. Today, I had a call with the county executive and his chief of staff. One of the topics that we've discussed was the Great Lawn and what Bellville's options are with regard to that property going forward. And again, you know, people say that we're going through COVID and we're dealing with a financial issue in the township. You know, how is it that you're still keeping the eye on the ball? And we have to always be looking forward. So while we are going through a financial issue and while we are restructuring a lot of departments in town hall and while we are trying to right a lot of the past wrongs, we're always still looking to the future. So what we can do or what the county can do with that property, we remain steadfast that the Great Lawn should always be open space or recreational and we do not want to see any development on that. However, that is in the hands of a private owner at this point. We did have a very good conversation today though. As you've noticed, if you've been paying attention to the news, we are going through a COVID spike in positives. That has led to enhanced restrictions and a lot more guidelines. Please keep an eye on our website and on social media. Neighboring communities are taking aggressive action and limiting and putting curfews on and limiting the amount of time you can spend at an outdoor establishment or a bar or a restaurant. NORC has done that. I believe Hoboken has also done that. Jersey City has responded with, at this point, they're not gonna do that. At this point, Bellville's still holding. We believe that there are a lot of positives out there. Our hospital, unlike the first wave, is not overrun. We don't have people in ICU, we don't have people on ventilators. I remember those calls early on in COVID, when we were on divert, when we couldn't have anybody else in our hospitals. That was a tough time. We're not there. Positive cases don't necessarily mean sick people. I for one know a few people that are currently positive without symptoms. So, but you still have to be vigilant, there's no doubt about that. Manager mentioned the contractor program. I will say that that's a program that's about to get some good publicity. Bellville has, the numbers are seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars available for our residents if they qualify to put improvements on their house. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of real money. That money has been paid for not by tax dollars, but by developers. As they come in, we have an obligation that they either have to provide low-income housing or give us money. That money goes into a bank. Guess what? That money has accrued to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with another four hundred thousand dollars due. So shortly, we're gonna have over a million dollars that the residents of Bellville can tap to make improvements to their houses. Information on the contractor portion of that program, which is where we are now, is on our website. The homeowner section will come after we certify certain contractors. Seven days until election day. I made a video today about our secure Dropbox location. It's at town hall, the side entrance. We did not pick that location. It is not in the front of the building. It is at the side of the building, next to the police entrance. That was selected by county officials, election officials. That has been bolted down, that's under twenty-four second video surveillance and it is emptied twice a day by election officials. Working in teams of two, one Republican, one Democrat, and they're escorted by a representative of the Essex County Sheriff's Department. Again, it's emptied twice a day. Our numbers aren't great. We've never had an all vote by mail election for a November general election. And I will tell you that we are currently, as of yesterday, at seventy-five hundred ballots in. We have about nineteen thousand registered voters in Bellville, so seventy-five hundred in a week out. It sounds low to me. We've never done this before, so I can't say it's higher or not, but I will tell you that four years ago, we had twelve thousand five hundred. So we have another week to go. There was a busy box today. I saw people constantly coming and going, so that's a good sign, but we do have a week to go. That's news, so I'm gonna rattle through some quick events. Halloween is not canceled. We do not have the authority here in Bellville to cancel a holiday. Our position as administration has been, we believe that parents can make the decisions on behalf of their children, whether or not they want them to go door to door. And we believe homeowners can make that decision for themselves, whether or not they want to participate. That being said, we do have some Halloween-type guidelines posted on our website and we are having a Halloween decorating contest. So you can nominate yourself, a neighbor, a family member, a friend. Information is on our website and social media. Deadline for that is October 31st. There is a hundred dollar gift certificate compliments of State Fair to the winner. Community Shred Day is coming up on Saturday, November 7th. Speaking of that weekend, November 7th and 8th is also our townwide garage sale. It is free, but we would ask you to register. If you register, you end up being, your address is marketed in our website and on our social media. Veterans Day, while we were optimistic we would get the five K run in and restrictions did not prohibit us from doing that. Unfortunately, it was something to do with the contractor that we used to organize the event. Therefore, we will not be having the five K run. We're not having a parade, but we are gonna do a small socially-distanced ceremony, just like we did for Memorial Day. Lastly, Councilman Casarelli may have some more information, but on November 14th, we're doing a street meeting. Can you just?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have a street dedication. It's gonna be on the corner of Dawson and Garden Avenue at ten o'clock in the morning. Let me just bring up this information real quick. Yes, so Sergeant John Arthur Distazio. He was nineteen years old. He was killed in action and we'll be naming a portion of Garden Avenue after him, particularly next to Dawson Street. So right by Mucci's Heroes, that little deli. That's ten AM on November 14th.
Thank you. And the last item I have is falls under the category of news. I know there's a lot of new faces here today and I would assume that that's because of recent water bills that have gone out or such. So I have communicated on that matter and I'm glad to see new faces here. I'm glad to see people that are interested in finding out the real answers and understanding what we're dealing with. Now, I encourage it actually, so I'm glad that you're here. I have communicated on this matter, whether it was social media or by direct mail. As the mayor of the town, I understand that most frustration is directed toward me and I accept that. That's my role as mayor, even though the council acts as a body in everything we vote on. And while, and I'm gonna get into it in a moment, as to why we were brought to the position to have to regrettably increase the water rate. The council acts as a body and we take the recommendations of our professionals. But I understand that I'm the mayor and I understand that most people can communicate with me or I'm accessible on social media or accessible via email. I've received about fifteen emails. I've responded to every single one of them. Email's a lot easier, just so you know, for me to respond to, I don't always see notifications on social media. But I did communicate about this. When the water bill was going out, I made sure, while the water bill was going out, as we do with every single tax increase, it's always a letter from me. It could be a letter from the entire council, since we tend to vote unanimously on the budget increase or we did vote unanimously on the water increase, but it's a letter from me. I believe that the residents need to hear it from me and I am not afraid to communicate the bad news as well as I communicate the good news. I often explain why we came to that decision. And if you saw my letter that was included in the water bill, I gave the justifications as to why we were brought to this position. That letter is now on the township website, it's also on my website and my social media. Since then, that was the justification as to why we needed. And just to give you the executive summary, if you haven't read it or this is the first you're hearing about it. We are a purchaser of NORC water. We don't create our water, we don't have a reservoir, we purchase water. We only have one place that we can purchase water from, that's the city of NORC. I don't have the exact letter in front of me, but I'm gonna just use some estimates here. Probably about five or six years ago, we have a contract with the city of NORC. We pay X amount per linear foot of water. That's what they charge us. Well, guess what? As in every single contract, it ticks up a little bit every single year. The problem is, Bellville had not increased their water rates for about six years, okay? I've been here for two and a half years. We have not increased our water rates for six years. We then ended up being out of contract with NORC. So Bellville, the township, was paying that last rate that we had, which was about four or five-year-old rate. My administration comes in, I get elected, I get a team behind me and we nearly start entertaining NORC to re-sign our contract. We then find out that because we've been out of contract for so long, we've been paying the old rate, that once we renew, we're gonna owe NORC one point six million dollars. I can't change that. There's nothing I can do about that. When we look back and say, well, why are we running this deficit? We then find out that the water rates had increased for so long. The water rates should have been ticking up a little bit each year as NORC was taking our rates up. It didn't happen, okay? It didn't happen. I'm sorry, so you're gonna have a good chance to speak on public commentary. So we have to come up with one point six million dollars to pay NORC. That was really the crux and the justification as to why. That's part one. I stand behind, the council voted unanimously because that's the evidence that was presented before us. That's number one. We have to now go out, take a loan for one point six million dollars, pay NORC back. Thankfully, we negotiated about four or five different payments. We're gonna pay that back in just like a home equity line of credit on your house. Part of the increase of the water rate will be used to pay that down. So that's part one as to the facts as to why we can, I can't change any of those facts. And frankly, as much as I would love to say, well, we're in a pandemic and we're going through a lot of things. Burying my head or this administration or this council burying your head and acting like it didn't happen is exactly what got us here. Six or seven or eight years of doing that is exactly what got us here. It would be worse in a year from now or two years from now, when we surface and decide to finally deal with this. I get it. I'm the mayor and the frustration is pointed towards me, but I'm also committed to correcting some of the wrongs. And when I got here, two and a half years ago, guess what? Our labor contracts were five years out. So therefore, or three, some were three years out, some were four years out. So guess what? When we negotiated them, we owed hundreds of thousands of dollars in retro to all those unions. Again, burying your head and wishing things go away or not wanting to deal with them is not the right course of action. We were elected as representatives to make the right decisions. Every single one of us up here, we're all taxpayers. Every single member of the council. Some of us own multiple properties. Trust me, we feel it just like you. We pay the same amount of taxes, we pay the same amount of water bills. That's the justification as to why and how we got here. That's part one. Then our financial team sat down and actually created a formula to figure out how much money we needed to make our obligations. That financial team came up with a formula. That was presented to the council by ordinance. That was voted on not once, but twice by discovering body, unanimous both times. Public hearing, so some people voiced concerns during that public hearing as to why the increase was going up. We gave some justifications for that. The justifications are the same justifications that were included in my letter, which I just explained. However, I am not opposed to after something's done, realizing and acknowledging the fact that perhaps it was done wrong. Not a bad decision because the decision was forced upon us that we had no choice but to increase the rate. But the calculations and the formulas and the data that was used to figure out how much that increase would be, probably two or three days after the last meeting in town hall, and I posted this. I was no longer comfortable with that they used the correct data to figure out how much of an increase there should be. Why is that? I'm gonna explain it. We utilized something called, we changed the rates for commercial and residential. So if you have a business and you have PSCNG service, whether it's gas or electric, your business pays slightly more of a rate because you're using that energy or that gas to produce a profit. I own a mixed-use building. My office on the first floor, I have a residential tenant on the second floor, right across from number three school. I pay more for gas and electric for my office than she does upstairs, just standard. One of the issues Bellville had, everybody was paying the same rate. You won't find that in really any other town. So our financial people said, we have to change the rate. Let's tick it up a little more for the commercial users since they utilize, we're talking water now, since they utilize water as a, whether it's a car wash or a laundromat, they use that to generate profits. So traditionally, they pay a little more. The problem was, the data they were using was incorrect. They grossly, in my opinion, underestimated the amount of commercial properties that we had in Bellville to the tune of about a hundred and eighteen. Now, I know just on Washington Avenue alone, we have more than a hundred and eighteen businesses. So with that being said, and I understand the rationale and how they came to that conclusion, but that's, need to hear and reveal at this point. The fact of the matter is that I believe there could be seven, eight, or ten times more commercial businesses than were originally calculated. What's that mean for the residential taxpayer? It means that, once they're done with the recalculations, and they've been doing it now for two straight weeks, once they're done with that, there's gonna be a lot more commercial properties in the pool that they pay a little bit more than the residential use. Therefore, more than likely, we're gonna anticipate a heck of a lot more revenue than we originally needed, which means that the rates for both commercial and residential can tick down. All I can say is that the rationale behind the original letter and behind the reason why we have to, that's part A. And I believe that the council, and there's no doubt about that, we have an obligation to fulfill those needs. However, I'm man enough to admit that there was a mistake made. I am not the day-to-day person that crunches the numbers. We are presented with information, council's advised, and then we make a decision to vote. And I have no problem saying that two days after that last meeting, in a meeting in town hall, I was presented with data that I questioned. And based upon that questioning, there's a resolution on tonight directing the township manager to formality, because he's already in, the financial people have already been doing it for two weeks, to recapulate that rate using the real numbers. At the end of the day, I believe that rate is way too high. I believe it was an error. Not a mistake that we had to raise it, but I believe the level it went to for both the residential and commercial users was wrong. And I believe that that rate will generate way too much money that we don't need. We need enough money to cover our obligations. Therefore, I truly believe that the commercial rate and the residential rate will get ticked down. And I have no problem sitting before all of you and saying that. I was not gonna bury my head, I was not gonna act like the error didn't happen. I wish, I made the error, so I can stand before you all and say it's my fault. But I didn't make the error, but I stand behind it. You know, the data that we had was the decision that we had to make. And that's it for as far as the water rate. We did communicate it, I did communicate it. I have no problem explaining it to you all today. I have no problem writing about it or answering all you. I know it's frustrating and I understand that the frustration is centered or targeted at me. I get that. That comes with the job, I have no problem with that. That's why I overly communicate at times. Communicated twice on this, third time is now, and I'm sure that we're still gonna have some questions during the evening, which is totally fine. So that, with that being said, it concludes. Good? Once the, it probably goes without saying, once we have a little more data, in my last, most recent post, I got my water bill and I paid it. And I urge everybody to pay the bill because there's not much we can do with the, wait? I'm getting there. I'm getting there. So I believe that there will be a credit on your next bill or a retro act. Not sure what else I can do about that. I'm sorry, there's a lot of new faces here. This is not really a shouting match, so there's gonna, excuse me, Mayor. So there's going to, excuse me ma'am. Excuse me ma'am, I'm speaking right now. This is, I'm talking right in the microphone. If you listen, you're probably going to hear me. There's a public portion of the meeting coming up where everybody has a right to speak. I know there's a lot of new faces here and I probably shouldn't have explained that, but during the meeting, there's public participation and every single one of you, if you want to speak, you have the right to speak, but just the way the meeting is run, it's not a back and forth conversation. I apologize. So ma'am, I'll call on you once, once we get to that portion of the meeting, okay? So we're going to move forward next. Item on the agenda is communications.
None of this time, ma'am.
Next item is item eight, if you're following our ordinances, which is ordinances. Ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing. A ordinance for men and revise general ordinances at the township of Belleville, chapter eight dash eight designated loading zone.
Make a motion open for color. I have a motion open and a second. I hear a second on there. Motion made in second to open for public commenting on this particular ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are hereby open for public commenting just on this particular ordinance, not, not the general topics that we'll get to in a little bit. Do you have anybody specifically on this ordinance? Motion closed.
Motion closed, public, and move for final adoption.
I have a motion made in second to close for public, uh, participation and move for final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
House member calls relative. DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Ordinance approved.
Next item on the agenda is item number nine, which is public comments. Here, I know there's a lot of new faces, so I'll, I'll give you the, the ground rules traditionally. When you're, if you want to speak, you can come on up, you can use the microphone, one at a time, because as you end, we're going to clean the, the podium, we clean the microphone. You do have five minutes to speak. I just need your name and address before you start, and then you have five minutes to speak.
Make a motion open for public comments.
Second.
I have a motion made in second to open for public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then you can just come on up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the letter you put in the paper, uh, in the water bill rather says the, Belleville had not raised the rate since 2012. I had my water bills in 2015. In 2015, they were raised. The minimum was $23, around $24.50, and we got a 6% raise. So you were wrong there. I don't know where you get your facts from. And you talk a lot.
Excuse me, don't, don't, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I know it's not, it's not an arena, there really is no applause and you can't really interrupt and take away from his time. Thank you.
Talk a lot, I'll give you a little advice. Words are hard, so I think you might tone it down because you're digging deep hole for yourself. The budget hearing this year was done online. You know, every year, we do this for 40 something years, and you can't ask what we had to ask questions in writing. The problem with that and the water budget, there's no way to rebut when we get a wrong answer. But now I'm going to go through the water budget, okay? I'm not making this up. Public, this is the 2020 budget I'm quoting from. Now, on page 10 of the municipal portion of budget, not the water, you don't think, it says due from the water capital. And through the chair, I want to address this to Mr. Iacono, because I have the administrative code, and it says, section two, there's 3.5, the township manager shall be responsible for preparation of municipal budget. So he should have the answer. So I'll ask him to him. So please, if you give him the courtesy to answer.
You can ask him if he can answer.
Well, I have the right to, through the chair, to ask for the respective person to answer.
If I give you permission to...
Don't waste my time, Mr. Mayor. On page 10 of the municipal budget, it says due for water capital budget, $890,000. Now, that is transferred from the water budget to the municipal portion. What was that $890,000 for, Mr. Iacono?
So, Mr. Iacono, either you or our CFO can actually answer that, who prepares the budget. Microphone, please. Can you repeat the question one more time? Judy, you have the answer there?
This is Joe Forcome speaking, so I can help with that answer.
We have, we have the order. Mr. Iacono, any member of our friends can answer, Judith or Joe Forcome. Joe, if you have the answer, you can go. Joe's our order.
Basically, what that is, is that during the course of the year, the current fund has paid expenses that were related to the water capital program. So those money has to be returned back to the general fund. Specifically, what side to fill up, I don't have that information, I could put my hand, but we could, we could research that and get back to you as far as exactly what was paid by the general fund in support of the water capital fund. And then again, the capital fund has to reimburse the current fund, and that's what, that's why I'm anticipating that money. That restricted use of our surplus, had that, had that been returned by December 31st, our surplus would have been $800,000 tied. But if it was not returned by December 31st, the divisional local government services allowed us to anticipate that as a revenue, which we did, which is approved by the division. That's what that represents.
Thank you very much. The point is that $890,000 was taken from the water budget. So I'm going to make that.
There were expenses that were related to the water budget that should have been paid directly from the water budget, but at the time, they were paid in the general budget. And therefore, the general fund is entitled to be reimbursed without expense.
Okay, Mr. Iacono.
Where the public don't know, under the budget, under the water budget, your water bills, there's a line item, and that's called rents. Under rents, let's see, we took in $4,540,000. And then there was another, rent additional, $960,000. When I asked at the last meeting where it came from, the CFO said it came from the surplus in the water budget. So that was well over, almost five and a half million dollars was there.
That's, that's not correct, you're saying what that is? Did that say, um, the ordinance increasing the water rate, and which, again, is supported by documentation remitted to the, the regional local government services, indicating the ordinance that was, so red, adopted, public hearing and so forth, and then there's a confirmation that attached that to support that additional rent that was anticipated in 2020 budget? That's, that's 960 represented.
Again, on, on sheet 32, it says for 2020, the purchase of water from North, uh, 2019 was 3.4 million, I'm rounding it off. And then for three, for 2020, $3.6 million. And then it includes back those to water, to North Water, another $391,000 for total to North, $4.0 million. Now, the thing is, when you raise the water rates 200% and 300%, just a 100% increase, if presently you raise 4, $4.5 million from our present water rates, then you anticipate for the next year, if you just, if you double it, it will be almost $9 million. So why do we get 200% to 300% increases? And Mayor, well, you liked it, take credit for a lot of things. You did, and I, your letter, I got all yellow highlighted, underlined, your letter is gobbledygook. You like the white letters? There's no truth there that you're saying. So what happens? There's no way, maybe we need a 10, 15% increase in our water bills, but no way do we need 100% and 200% or 300% increase. And when you say the, the commercial businesses, when you said the commercial business should use the water to make profits, I'd like to think we go to my laundromat. The oldest laundromat, about 48 years, because there's no parking, because of the problems we got in Belleville, five years ago, I lowered my prices from $1.50 to $1, just to get people to come in there. So I'm, I'm really giving the public service away. Fortunately, I own the building, so I can afford that. So when you want to raise water rates on commercial developments, and Miller Flady was here at the last meeting, he might go out of business after being in town and thinks 60 years. So when you want to call this on the commercial businesses, you're going to hurt them too. Your rent runs are going to hurt them all.
Thank you, ma'am.
And let's go, but there's no reason we need this dramatic increase, and the budget proves it, you know?
Thank you.
And, and you're really disparaged for drawing your executives under the bus. It's your problem, you should take credit for this problem. You know, now, the executives had the wrong data, but you want to come off as the hero. We're tired of you.
Thank you. I'll tell you that.
It's about 95 bells. Before we go any further, a little six feet part there.
Yes.
A little further.
You, you're six foot eight.
We're not six feet apart. All right, last meeting, you didn't answer a lot of my questions. I'm, I'm just going to start all over again. Took me, last time, it took me three meetings to get an answer about the campaign workers. I don't know if you've got the job, but, but I could do my own homework and I said there's a lot more to three associated with you. And I asked you a question at the last meeting, why on a Sunday did the town pick up garbage from the food truck, the trauma scene? Who authorized it? I still didn't get that answer. Question I asked also, is a vacancy in the clerk's department? When is that position being advertised? And do all the employees have the proper credentials in their position? Now, one thing I noticed in the, on my tax bill, the library tax bill officer is your president up to the, on the board. And you represent the town as the mayor. And is it true that your own personal lawyer is now the attorney for the library board? Now, on resolution number three, why are we spending money on a labor attorney? It was already rejected by the council, but I noticed that you put the two positions in, in your advertising, and why do we need a labor attorney? That's why you have the town manager, that's why you have an assistant, which is here. It's always been traditionally, town manager's job. And all we're doing for some reason is to depend on hiring more people. Then you, number seven, now all of a sudden with this water bill, it looks like you're trying to make a scapegoat as the manager. I feel sorry for him, because all these issues could have been resolved before we got the bill. Now, how is it possible that the water bills have doubled more? My question is, how many linear feet were we paying? How many linear feet, how much per linear feet are we paying now? I don't know, $5, $10? And that answer I don't, I didn't get. It makes totally no sense. If you remember back in 2000, 2004, when you were on the governing body, you guys voted for a sore tax. To me, that was just another way to create a surplus, and I'm seeing this water bill as creating a surplus also, oh, it stays removed 20 years later, would you again? You criticized the old regime, which I was part of, but you, you were back the old regime back then. Then he ran out of town in 2004 and moved, and now all of a sudden, you came back and you're the savior of Belleville. Now, let me ask you the last question. How are citizens on a fixed income going to pay for a recent tax increase in a water bill? Social Security, average bill that they receive actually increases $20 a month. $20 a month, do the math. How do you pay? I got a $583 increase. If I got $20 increase and I have no other income, how am I supposed to pay my bill? We've got 4,500 senior households in this town. How are they supposed to pay? I don't know. And we just told them you were going in the right direction? I don't think so.
Thank you.
And I like my answer.
So I have a few, I have a few, I wrote down some of the questions. So your question about the property, who's picking up garbage on Sunday? Mario, you've been almost every single one of our meetings, so you know the answers to most of these questions. The answer to that question is never history available, did we ever have a DPW crew working on the weekend? And they're part timers, they make $12, $14, $15 an hour. So traditionally, we would have to pay overtime to DPW to go out and pick up garbage in a park. Well, guess what? Mr. Iacono, since he's been here, created a new initiative where our part timers actually work weekends, and we have, I think, one member that works Tuesday through Sunday, or Tuesday through Saturday, and is off on Monday. So actually, we're able to provide a service and not cost the residents more, which is why you noticed them picking up the garbage. But you didn't stay here and say, great job of picking up garbage on a Sunday, you're making accusations as to why we're picking up garbage on a Sunday. It's a park, Mario, you know that park, it's called the Pistol Range. Next item is the clerk's office. I don't handle personnel, you know that, Mario, as well, because you were a former mayor. Labor council, you know, Mario, that every single year, we issue RFPs for various professionals, within those professionals are all of our attorneys. It's an RFP we issue that allows us to qualify them and use them if needed. I believe that we're about to start negotiating one or two union contracts, therefore, we have labor council engaged. When you don't, you can't negotiate a labor contract against attorneys without a labor attorney. You know that, Mario. You've been here. Lastly, was the water bill, I think we've kind of covered that. Anybody else? Yeah? Another strength of the country?
Happy birthday, Kelly. Normally, I'd come to these meetings with an open mind, but that proved to me to be very wrong. With the pandemic, you raised the taxes with no concern to the taxpayer. Then to put the topping on the cake, you raised the water rates, doubled, tripled the rate, whatever. My daughter works for her company, and during the pandemic, her salary was reduced 15%. As of now, we're starting to get back some of its stuff, some of their salary back. I don't see anything like that happening in Belleville. You just keep raising the rates to everything, to our taxes, to our water rates. I have a neighbor in back of me, and what she does, she goes to the store, she buys progressive soup, and she eats a half a can of soup a day. Because she can't afford to pay all the taxes and everything that's going up, and she's afraid she's going to lose her ass. I went shopping the other day, there was a little woman in the store, maybe she was younger than me, I don't know. She, her bill came to $9 and something, she had $11 on her, and after she paid her bill, she turned around and said, oh, look, I got $2 left till I get my next check in November. I could cry. I mean, I developed a lot of people through the years, we'll bring them in dinners and all that stuff, but now it's getting absolutely ridiculous. You give the developers tax baitings, and what do the taxpayers get? They get nothing in return, really. They get a baitings for this, they get everything. You send letters in with your water bill and with the tax bill, trying to get the sympathy of the people, and it's not working, because what we used to call people like that back years ago, and I'm sure they call them now, con men.
So Ms. Franc Antoni, I, I'm not going to be able to answer people if there's applause and clapping, that's not the way these meetings are run. I apologize for that. Ms. Franc Antoni, so you mentioned that you don't see anything like that happening in Belleville. I know either you or Mr. Franc Antoni were here when the council passed the resolution a few minutes ago, directing the township manager to do a lot of pretty drastic things. A lot of those things have happened. We bought out employees, we've saved over $500,000 in next year's salaries, and just about, Mr. Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, about two weeks ago, we eliminated several part-time positions to the tune of $150,000 a year. So when you say that you're not seeing that, it's, you might not be seeing it, but that doesn't mean it's not happening, and we have communicated those things. The council has passed by resolution directing the manager to act. The manager actually responded to us by, uh, within his management report, and to the tune that we've already consolidated a lot of positions. We've reduced positions, we've reduced salaries, and we've eliminated employees. Those are the facts. I can't, I can't argue with you, but those are the facts. Ma'am, go back. Sure, ma'am, go back. No, no, I'll, I'll get you next.
Hello.
You just, I'm sorry, ma'am.
My name is Lisa Lady, and I also represent my sister, my main doors. We've been living in Belleville for over 15 years.
Address, please.
Um, 194, 1916, straight. So I have a few problems, and this is the first time I ever been at a town hall meeting. I just told my husband at the time that we need to start coming to, um, we have to come in more. Because what I'm seeing, I'm really disappointed. And I've always been proud of this town, and what I'm seeing today, and this is my first time really seeing in person, my daughter is actually the first in Belvo of this town. Her name is Andrea Lacy. And I'm really disappointed. But let me just tell you three things I'm disappointed in. First of all, I'm disappointed with the water bill, how it was thrown upon us. I mean, everybody really has their own situation that's going on. Some of us have tenants, some of them have our own problems. For us to build, my, my water bill is still overboard about for my sister's side and my side, which is ridiculous with the times of everybody struggling right now. And I haven't heard anything about, is it going to get better, or is this something that is gonna happen?
Ma'am, did you just come here?
No, but I heard you say the state, but I didn't hear clarity in saying that it's gonna, next month, guess what, everybody? We're gonna get a credit. You don't have to worry about this. It's a one-time thing. I didn't hear that clarity at all. Number two, I see that a lot of times when I call town hall, I've been calling them since, I know there's a pandemic going on, but the house is behind on Home Street. There's abandoned homes and a lot. I've been calling older and older and yet, can someone come out? There's wildlife, there's a forest going behind my house, and no response. Everyone never has a clear answer. And I'm now trying to say, is it coming from the top? And I don't know. I mean, I don't know. But it seems that way, because we're like, even though we're a little cackling, and we're all trying to just say positive terms at times, all I see is you keep shutting us down, shutting us down, shutting us down. And I felt, I thought it could be really disturbing. So, calm down. What I need to know is, first of all, the water bill. Can you clarify, the next quarter, when we get this bill, is it gonna be a two hundred percent? Are we getting a credit? Is it gonna be, um, quarterly? It's gonna be a certain percentage?
I did mention that I do expect it to be a credit. I don't have the, I don't have the data yet. They're still working on it. Tonight, there's a resolution on directing the township manager by, I expected it to be passed by the council, directing the township manager, which they've already been doing, but just formally directing him to actually get back into the numbers and do it. But I did say, if you were here in the beginning, that I do expect it to be a credit.
Can you promise that? You need to hear, you know what, next month, when we have to pay our mortgage with the high taxes, and the other, other responsibilities that you have, that people that live in Belvo, that we won't have a two hundred or a one hundred percent increase?
The, the bills are quarterly. I do, I do expect it to be a credit in the next bill. I'm paying mine, but I do expect it to be a credit in the next bill.
Okay, now the next question.
And if you want to give us, I'm sorry, interrupted. If you want to give us the address of that property, the township manager's here.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't know what department you called or.
I called the environment. I called the permit. I called the people for the survey. It's, I had gotten the rundown that someone was out sick. They could not come.
Okay, you want to just give us the address?
One ninety-four, one ninety-sixteenth street, behind my home.
These are eighty-eight or eighty-two routes.
Routes behind it. The lady that used to live there, she passed away, and I think her house is under some kind of problem because of her family, so they're not taking care of the property, which she used to do. Now, this is ridiculous. I can't do anything. The trees are coming over, there's, there's wildlife coming out from back of my yard, and there's nothing I can do. I've called numerous times. So those are.
Okay, and just so, and it's your first time here. I hope to see you in the future, but just so you know, the way that it traditionally works, especially now that I got a little more information, it's an abandoned, what was the, the second address you gave?
These are eighty-eight or eighty-two routes.
You can't miss it.
I, I know it. I know.
The house looks.
Is, is a hole in the house? Right, there's a hole.
Trees are in the back. We haven't seen our grass in our backyard.
Right.
Because the trees are both growing.
A lot of times, we can't necessarily enter, and our DPW director's here, his men will be out there doing it, but initially, we can't just enter the property. It's privately owned. We have to notice and take a dump, so there's a possibility.
Like I said, I beg you to hear, there's also a lot that is owned by Belvo, that you normally before, it's the primary savings every year.
I know the exact property.
You don't, you haven't done that.
Our DPW director's here. Apologize that you didn't get to the right person, but you're here now. You have all the right people here that can, that can take care of it. Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, I promised you, I, I promised you. I just need your, your name and address.
Uh, thirteen Hill Street in Belvo. Okay. My, I, being a new person, just like the lady living in this town, um, like I said, I don't know everybody. I know a few people, not too many, just by coming to meetings. This is my second. We do that, I don't do it. And what I notice, a lot of questions to you as a mayor. Number one is, as I sit here and I watch, I see that the people of this town don't respect me. They elected me, but they don't respect me. And you don't stand up as a mayor and give your respect to them. You know, and what I'm saying is this, you just said that we can only buy water from Newark, right? Newark is the only place that we can buy water from. Is that correct? Is that what you just said now?
Yes.
Okay, so are you aware that three days ago, Mr. Baraka, Mr. Baraka got a grant to get free piping spits on the lead that's in the water? So that means if we.
That's not true.
Excuse me.
That's not true.
If the town of Belvo is buying water from the town of Newark, that lead is what we're drinking.
That's not true. That's not.
Okay, wait. So are we gonna get a grant to fix our water if we get that lead?
I can't answer something that's not factual, so I'll let you speak and then I'll speak.
Okay. You know for a fact that Ross Baraka, just, he was even on our news, that he got a grant to fix the piping, new pipes in his, for the lead that's in their water.
There are.
There's lead in your water.
I'll give you your time and I'll speak.
Okay, which we admit. Okay, my, my thing is, that's not true. Baraka just said it. I'm not sure it's a lead. That is to fix the lead that's in his pipes, and they're gonna get new lead to get rid of the lead that's in their water. So we're buying water from Belvo, from Newark, that lead is gonna come to us?
That is not true, ma'am. That is just not true.
My, my, my other question to you is that, just like the lady said, I understand you don't have the data now. I understand, and it's something that's being processed, about how and when is that data gonna be resolved, and we're gonna get another one of your famous letters on your card that it's been resolved.
So just so you know, I write my letter, Ms. Franc Antoni said it where she said, I try and get sympathy. I write letters to communicate to people. I write letters to explain what's going on. Prior mayors never did that. And I understand that as I write letters, trying to explain what's going on, I get this. That's fine. But I don't write letters for sympathy. I don't write, I write letters to educate people as to what's going on in town. So with that being said, Mr. Manager or our Judith, do we have any idea when we might have an estimate as to what the new rates may or may not be?
Judith, I'm gonna take that. So let's just go back, just for one second. So, um, what was represented earlier this season? What was represented this season?
So can you speak a little louder?
Sure. So what was represented is that we received, when we sat down to do our municipal budget, we received our water bill from Newark, and what we were charging, we were short by one point four million dollars. So we were in a deficit. The state came in and said, you cannot adopt your budget until you raise that rate. And we had to cover that deficit. So that's the first step in the process of why the increase was so high. There was no, there was no negotiations here. We had to increase the anticipated revenue by one point four million dollars, or the state would not have allowed us to adopt a budget. And by law, by budget law, you have to have a budget in place. And we only adopted it last month, which was like nine months into the calendar year. Calendar year starts in January. So that's why we had to act on the way we did. Now, for the first time, for the first time in the history of the water utility, we are now charging residential property one rate and commercial properties another rate. It clearly is not fair for a one or two family home to pay the same rate as a restaurant or as a laundromat, as a salon. So now, so now, what we're doing and what we've been doing for the last month is we are reclassifying all. In the past, there was only one rate. So commercial paid the same as residential. For the last month, we have been separating, since the last meeting, we've been separating all of the commercial properties to be charged a commercial rate and all the residential rates to be charged. Once we, once we put that formula in place, and it's time consuming, because there are over seven hundred, there are over seven hundred commercial properties. So once we do those calculations, um, we will then be able to, be able to make the adjustment. Now, the next bill goes out in, um, January.
Yes, I know.
Okay. Prior to January, and maybe even as early as the next meeting, we will have the new formula to show the residential rate versus a commercial rate.
Sometimes between our last meeting.
Because I think we all, I think we all agree that it's unfair for one or two family homes to pay the same rate as a commercial rate. And again, we didn't set that up. That's been in place for the last umpteen years.
Okay.
So now we're just trying to take a more proactive role, and when we do that, it's going to, it could actually reduce both the commercial and residential.
Okay, so you're saying we had a one point four million dollars deficit when you made the budget for this town? That we're trying to save the water, right? Correct?
Correct. So Newark was charging us A, and we were charging residents B.
Okay, I understand that.
Difference between A and B was one point four million dollars.
Now, um, since you said you like to educate people, why don't you educate people? Um, the budget that you, like you said, that wasn't, does that include the budget for the raises to the employees and everything else you have to do in the town, Mr. Mayor?
The budget would include raises and deductions, all of our obligations.
Okay, so that includes the fifty thousand dollar raise that they were gonna give to your town manager?
No, it doesn't include that.
So we have a one point four deficit, but you included in your, in your, in your budget, a fifty thousand dollar raise for your town manager, and people like myself started calling your town, asking you about that fifty thousand dollar raise. You don't have one point four million dollars, and you come after our residents and the people that pay taxes, but you have fifty thousand dollars to give to your town manager.
So ma'am, it's very difficult to, it's very difficult to answer when something's not true.
Oh, it's not.
Mr. Icono, ma'am, ma'am, this is not about, your time is up. This is not about.
No, my time is not up. I still got, I still got two point six minutes.
The ringer, the ringer went off about a minute ago.
You said five minutes, and you gotta give me my time.
The ringer went off when Mr. Icono was speaking.
No, it did not. I have it right here. I have it same time as you.
So it's very, ma'am, I'm not having a back and forth conversation.
I'm not having a back and forth. I have a question to ask you.
And I'm trying to answer.
Those fifty thousand dollars that you selected for Mr. Ryan Corno, including the one point four deficit that we have to pay, that is out of right, because we can't, you can't pay for the water.
Can I answer him?
Okay, sure.
You are absolutely, totally incorrect. Mr. Icono has not received the raise, therefore no fifty thousand dollars. It's not a budget. You're reading your information online and it's wrong.
That's on your website, though. That's on your website.
It's not on my website, ma'am. Your time is up. Thank you.
No, it's not. It's still five minutes, sir.
Your time is up, ma'am.
My time is not up, because you don't like people coming up to you and telling you to, to your face and asking you questions. I pay taxes in this town. I believe that my taxes have some time of paying your salary. I shouldn't be paying a salary to a man that doesn't know how to handle the town or get respected by the town. We elected you to help us. You're screwing us, is what you're doing.
Your time is up.
You're screwing us on our taxes. You're screwing us. No, my time is not up. My time is not up. I have a minute and fifty-eight seconds. Give it to me. It's mine.
Your time is up, ma'am. I'm gonna call the next person now.
Now, I don't care if people come to give you a raise. I have a minute and forty-two seconds.
Everybody heard the bell go off when Mr. Icono was speaking.
Look, you're screwing us on our taxes. You're screwing us on our water bill. You went and you put those ugly baskets that, that, that are all over the town, that the only thing you have in there is cigarette ashes and dog food bags all over the place, and nobody comes and clean it. You say you wanna repair Belvo and make it nice, but you don't send anybody to go clean those big baskets that you put there. That's disgusting. Every time I go to a pizza video somewhere around, I see that. That's what I see, that.
Thank you.
Okay? Yeah, thank you. Thank you for helping out our town, sir. You know what? Somebody should do a.
Ma'am, we're not gonna go on long enough. Your time is up. Officer, please. We're ending this right now. Thank you so much. Thank you. Anybody else?
Somebody should do a E. C. O. R.
Thank you.
You're not a minor.
Thank you for your time, ma'am. So?
You're not a minor.
She's fine. She just acts like her real sex. I said she's fine, but she doesn't have to leave as long as she sits down and listens like her real sex listens. Acts like her real sex. All I said. And that is done, ma'am. I just got done telling you what I said. This is not in our arena. Okay, I know there's a lot of new people here. There's a procedure to the way public meetings are done. I didn't create the rules. Those are the rules that we follow. Thank you. So, actually, you know what, sir? I'm not gonna take away from your time, but I did want to answer a question that was asked for me. So just to clarify, I've been through this ad nauseam, but I understand there's a lot of new people here, so I'll, I'll say it again. The issue was Newark water quality. I'm gonna try and give the executive, ma'am, you cannot outburst, ma'am. Okay, you just can't do it. It's disruptive to the entire reading. The question about Newark's water quality, we purchase our water from the city of Newark. That water does not come from the city of Newark. It comes from Newark-owned reservoirs, Paquonic and Wanacue. Therefore, when you read about any issue about the city of Newark water, that's not necessarily our water. We get our water before it gets to Newark from pipes that come from Paqonic and Wanacue. That's number one. Number two, there's absolutely, and it's a little technical, there's absolutely no lead in the water we purchase from Newark. When the water comes from the source at Wanacue or Paquonic, there's no lead in that water at all. The lead issue comes when, from the center of the street, which is the big pipe, as it connects to your individual houses. Those are called residential service lines, which in Belvo, just like most other towns, the homeowner is responsible for the residential lead service line. I replaced mine many years ago. So, there's no lead at all in the water. The water has the potential to have lead leach into it if and when it lays overnight in the homeowner's lead service line. If it sits too long, which is why I tell you to run the water for a minute or two in the morning. It has the potential to leach into it if it's not treated correctly. Newark has since got the treatment correct, and Newark is no longer in the range of fifteen parts per billion where they have to notice people that there's a potential that if you have a lead service line, lead may leach into your water overnight. If you live in an apartment building, you have no lead issues. If you live in a mixed-use building, you have no lead issues. If you live in a house that was built after nineteen fifty-two, when lead service lines were banned, you have no lead issues at all. But there's no lead in the water. I've spoken to Mayor Baraka. I was with him last Friday. The grant they got was not to fix or take out lead out of the water. It was in case their schools have some fixtures or have old pipes that have lead to replace those. Our schools do not have any of that. So it's two different things, but there's no lead in, I know it's, it's not splitting hairs, but there's no lead in the water. The water's fine. If you happen to have a residential lead service line in your particular house, there's a potential that that lead could leach into your water, which is why they tell you to run it. Newark, there isn't treatment for that. It coats the pipes, so it doesn't do it. Newark has the treatment right now. Newark is no longer at an actionable or noticeable level, which is fifteen parts per billion. It's no longer an issue. Uh, that's the executive summary of, of the, the issue with lead, lead in the water. I'm sorry, sir. I didn't want, I didn't want to give her the courtesy of a response or for the benefit of everybody else. I'm sorry, sir. State your name and address, please.
Dan Costigan, two fifty Ross Street. Dan Costigan, two fifty Ross Street. My case says I'm not normally here. It's on the water bill. It's everybody else's, just a note. Except, I contacted the DPW, um, and I was expecting a Felipe or someone to come out to check my residence quarterly. My bills normally were a hundred to a hundred and twenty, five hundred to thirty-five dollars.
A quarter, right?
A quarter. My last quarter was three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. I was told I had nine alarms. I still have not had anybody to come out.
Nine what, sir?
Nine alarms telling me that I'm overusing the water, but nobody's come to the resident, knocked on the door, and as many times as we call, we have not gotten any results. My last quarter's bill was a thousand twenty-eight dollars. I do not have the ability to pay that. I paid two increases on property taxes in the last.
I just, I just want to back you up. You said the last bill was three hundred?
Three seventy-seven.
Two bills we got, two.
Two bills we got, sir. We've been contacting DPW.
So clearly, there's probably a leak.
Possibly. It's not in the resident. Um, as for the bill that we're talking about paying now, that I cannot feasibly and with conscience pay and wait for a week. Is this going to be on this rate continually every quarter? Because mine doubled from twenty-four fifty to fifty-five dollars. So it's a hundred, it's a hundred percent increase on the rate. Am I going to be paying this rate every quarter?
The rates that Mr. Icono mentioned, hopefully before the next meeting, but you have two issues, I think. I think you have a leak.
Yes.
Which DPW is here now, and Mr. Icono is here now. Give us some time. That's convenient for you tomorrow. Somebody will be there. So I think that the exorbitant amounts, the, the second one was certainly probably a leak, especially they're saying there's alarms. I don't really understand, like a warning or.
But what does town members say? Like they told me, they said that you're nine alarms. And I said, they told me they can come out and they'll be come out.
Okay.
And then I asked them, this is gonna be every quarter?
No, we're gonna face it now.
And you don't know. Like, I will be honest with you. I need to know. I'll need to put my house up. I bet you four thousand is taxes to sixty thousand, and now I'm paying about a quarter of yours.
No, that's, that's, I understand. So well, more likely there's a leak, and there's probably a case for sure. and there's probably a increase for sure. Yeah, it could be, it could be underground. But that's something that we do, we, we stay, we find it, we'll, we'll deal with it for you.
Okay.
Do you have Anthony, do you have all your information? Yeah, if you just see, right away, actually, when you're done speaking, you can speak to us, young man.
As, as for taxes, um, we are up approximately from the time, we're in the town 28 years old now. My tax start, we started at 1650, I'm now close to $14,000 a year. That's, that's over 400% because of my taxes. I don't see increasing services in the town. Like I said, I've been here a while, I've been here since the 1800s, late 1800s, okay? And I don't know how they pay their taxes because the property, they own multiple properties are astronomical. But what services are we gonna increase in the future, what can we expect? I'll be honest with you, I didn't go for it, I don't know if I would again, because I'm, I'm on the fence.
Sure, I can answer a question, huh?
We've never had a town manager, a full-time town manager before, okay? We did, we never saw a posting for the position being assigned or voted on, that's never been managed, okay?
It was, though, it was.
We've never had a CFO in the town before.
True, which is, sir, which is why we're in the situation we're in. We now have a full-time manager.
I'm, I'm gonna post these questions, you know, and don't take it as a insult.
I will not.
If we have to have a CFO to run the town, what is your job?
As the mayor, I'm not the day-to-day, I don't, just so you know, so the, the manager is basically the CEO of the town. Manager runs the day-to-day operations, he's the full-time professional, it's the CEO.
What the town manager wants, what does the CEO want?
What the council, what the council does, the council is basically the board, or I would be the president of the board if it was a corporation. So the C, the township manager is the CEO, the CFO handles the finances. We are suffering from the fact that we have a part-time manager for many years.
The CEO, what is him?
CEO would be like the township, equivalent, township manager.
Normally a CFO handles the finances, not a CEO.
No, no, CEO, the town manager handles the day-to-day running of the town. CFO, which we now have, we had a part-time manager for many years and we had no CFO, which is why nothing was being dealt with. Now we're finally dealing with it, and I get it, the brunt of it falls to me and this board, now we're finally starting to find errors, find out that rates weren't increased, find out we're out of contract, find out we owe Newark 1.6 million dollars, settling lawsuits, all kinds of other stuff.
Okay.
I don't know what that is. Yeah, I, I wouldn't read much on the internet and extract, your best bet, come here and ask questions.
Okay.
I do need to wrap up.
As for the $750,000 surplus that we have in that fund, I put a large addition on my house, I greatly improved it out of my pocket. I put over $240,000 of debt into my house. We have a surplus in town, yet it's being given to other individuals to reinvent.
It's, it's not a surplus, sir, it's a, I have to, it's not, it's a dedicated program that developers have to pay into a specific fund specifically to increase low-income houses. We cannot use that money for anything else. It's, every single municipality has that, the county has a similar program. It's a fund that a developer has to pay to help low-income people, either give them units in their buildings or put money into a fund. We can only use that money to fund, uh, to fund low-income people in addition. But something you might benefit from is, is our recent rehab program, if and when you did that improvement recently, you might be able to hold the taxes off on that increase. Township manager can give you that information as well.
Okay, the, the loan that must be taken out for the 1.6 million dollars to pay the city of Newark for the water, then I have two more questions. One, why did Newark not ask for their increase and what their billing is, how they have the right to ask for that? They should tell you the rates, not grading on them for us to have to incur such a large substantial amount at one time? And the amount of 1.6 million dollars that we're borrowing to pay this deficit back is gonna be paid over what period of time? How is that being paid back out of this one initial increase?
So we're paying Newark its in four or five different installments? And what is the year of the bond, once we have the, the bond, 20 years?
We're supposed to pay the back, what period, what period is? That's one that we should be raising.
Okay.
If we get a loan on the gift, we don't have a loan right now.
Okay, the bond we do, if when we bond for it to pay it back, it's usually a 20-year bond?
Got that, yes.
Okay, I do need to wrap up, sir.
Okay, then my normal bill at a rate of double 55, I have an excess of $973. Why, my 973 excess, he paid over a time period just like the loan? Why should he be hit with one substantial amount at one time?
The law doesn't allow us to take payment plans.
No.
The, 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 the public contract would not, public laws would not allow us to do payment plans like that.
So, so we should incur the cost and burden of a one-time bill that the administration of this town, it's incurred over X amount of years?
And what was it, different administration too also, sir?
Take the money, say it, and that money that's there is gonna give interest, we're only paying quarters, however your fourth payment looks at that amount. The interest is making off the bar now.
I, I can't hear the question, I'm sorry.
In other words, if we are paying it in one month stop.
But you're paying, you're paying your bill quarterly, correct?
No, we're, this increase, right, we're paying it in one month stop, and we're gonna pay it now. And you're only gonna pay it in four installments, so you're gonna take that money and your interest, I don't think you're doing the interest.
I'd like to answer that, this is a little bit confusing, confusion. We started out with a negative 1.4 million, we had to make that up in one quarter. That's a part of your billing in addition to the 1.67.
So you're paying it in one time?
So if you look at the budget, the budget calls for, we're out to give up, give up payments back. So it's 1.6, there's 390,000 dollars in the budget for that bill, okay? We originally started at a 1.4 million negative besides the 400, so we're looking at 1.8. That's a part of your bill, we had to raise that difference in one quarter billing per state.
So my next quarter's bill should only be, should only be a normal bill with a rate increase and no excess?
Well, the mayor had, well, well, the excess depends upon how much water you use. The minimum rate is 500 cubic feet, so if you go over that, you're gonna get an excess bill. 500 cubic feet is about 34, 3400 gallons a month. That's what 500 cubic feet is.
I, I think the confusion is the, the excess that you're seeing, you think all of that is an additional charge going to Newark, that's not true, that just means you're using more than 500, what is it? 500 cubic feet of water, that's true, there's a different rate, you have to make it 500, that's the excess, the excess.
So, why would I call the town if she tells me that there's nine alarms? Saying that we're using excess, nobody can reach out to us to tell us there's a problem? I mean, I'm 400 or somewhere.
Sure. Again, I, I can't answer, I don't know who you spoke to or what they actually said to you. We're gonna send Bobby over tomorrow to, to ensure that there is a leak or not a leak, and then it hopefully makes sense from that point.
And if they don't find a leak, we just start a leak, I could pay what that's gonna cost. Cool, what do you got?
I didn't say that, again, right now, just on face value, you're two family home?
No, no, one.
Okay, one. Based on my experience, I'm gonna say that there is a leak there, okay? That's, that seems, you have a sprinkler system?
Yes, I do, and I had, I had a leak last year, the sprinkler system been shut down all season.
Okay, so you didn't use the sprinkler system? Okay, because that's, that's one of the common areas where there are leaks, where you don't even know the water's running. So won't we, you know, tomorrow Bobby will be. Let me get, let, let me, have you have your information over to Bobby so he can definitely contact you tomorrow? Thank you for your time, thank you. Anybody else?
Sir? Mayor Jim Kirman, 13 Hill Street in Belleville. Uh, three-part question, so I'll like my five minutes, if they can ask a few questions, okay? Mark. For the X number of years that Belleville was riding on with the old rate, Newark never notified Belleville of the, of a, a rate increase or anything like that?
They reached out, when I got in the office two and a half years ago, there had been multiple inquiries to the prior administration to sit down to start conversations about that. We immediately did that.
But all 30 years, nobody, Newark never notified Belleville?
No, I just said.
That they're, they're behind on X number of dollars?
My information tells me they did, because when I got to office, they were already reaching out for us because they had not been able to sit down with anybody yet. And we did that right away, we did.
All right. The second one, what are you gonna do, you, before you mention that, however your cap, uh, Newark cap relates to their water coming into Belleville, uh, square footage, whatever, what are you gonna do about the delinquent companies and, uh, families that are behind on their water bills? Because you say Newark supplies Belleville with X number of quarter per year or per day, whatever, what are you gonna do about these companies and homes, and homes, I hate to say it, that's behind on their water bills? You gonna shut the water off, you gonna let them still ride with free water? While, while whipping, while the rest of us are saddled with payment, uh, water? Tax increase?
Well, I thought you were gonna give the three-part question to, to get my five minutes, I got it.
And, and the third one, I'm gonna get my five minutes in.
That's why I'm letting you go.
Not, not only Belleville, but county and the state. If you look in Belleville, the wrong, I know Belleville's a cherry blossom tree town, whatever, going on. Years ago, cherry, I think about 300, 500 trees were planted in Belleville. As you know, cherry blossom trees grow outward, not upward with other types of trees, they grow outward. They are blocking stop signs, uh, heavy other kind of road signs in the township of Belleville. Can somebody identify each intersection or all through the town to find out these branches are blocking a stop sign, a crossing, uh, type of stack, uh, intersection and everything else? Should we get them come or get them cut? Right now is the time to do it, while the vegetation is still on the trees, not in a wear time when everything falls off. But when you have vegetation on these trees, let somebody come go around town, identify these intersections and blocks and everything else of whatever blocking any kind of road signs, you know, have them treated.
Thank you. So just to answer some of your questions, um, we do a pretty good, I think our percentage of, of tax collection is, is 98%. We do have a reserve for uncollected taxes, I believe that does include water, but for anybody that doesn't pay, we have to follow the state guidelines as far as shut-off. Shut-offs are very difficult, but I do believe, uh, Judith or Anthony can correct me if I'm wrong, that when we do a tax sale, we also do a water sale. So, anybody who's in the arrears, that is sold, somebody buys that, pays us, and then they collect interest when they can, so that's really not, not one of the issues that we actually have in Belleville. Uh, and with regards to the cherry blossoms, uh, you may or may not know, I've recently learned that there's many, many different species of cherry blossoms, but I agree with you, uh, maintenance is an issue. Belleville used to have a shade tree program, but no longer do. I am the person that's usually driving around town, taking pictures, sending Mr. Iacono all night and weekend long. Uh, Mr. Walter's been the receiving end of that. I usually identify it, but we do a program where we hit certain streets. I know you said you're Hill, uh, I know we did Chestnut, I know we did somewhere around the high school where you can't walk down the sidewalk because the trees are, are sticking out. So when we see a street like that, we do send the crews down. I know we did that on Washington Avenue, you know the not cherry blossoms. Uh, but we don't necessarily have a shade tree division, but when we do identify a specific location, we do send a team out to, to determine as much as we can.
Another one, I'm excited, but just for example, when you come down with vision, the limited intersection, like you all the person, fire around, when you get there? That stop sign?
Got it, Mr. Walter, you have that? Thank you, thank you. Thank you, anybody else? Ma'am in the back?
My name's Teresa Darrow, the deputy of the.
Can you just speak in the mic, ma'am?
Sure, I'm sorry. Um, I just wanted to know, um, is Union Avenue is a county district, are you? County, Union Avenue is a county number, okay. Um, Little Street, the intersections, Little Union, Long Union, um, bad, bad intersections, there was really that accident last night.
I saw the question.
The other night, and I know that they had to take down county cars at Long and they had digital signs, they took them down, then they threw one out, a big one. I just wondered, is there anything they can do for these intersections that accidents? It's terrible, and a 14-year-old girl, for a girlfriend.
I saw the question.
And, um, you know, the intersection, I'm so happy we have a thriving business on the corner with the liquor store, but, um, the U-Term's, the intersection, the double parking, parking right on the corner, you can't see the alley, you know, just.
So there's a couple things that we can do, I've dealt with a, a gentleman that's directly across the street from Houston Church, we, we email daily.
Right.
Uh, I know that he was instrumental in assisting us in getting the county, so first of all, you are correct, it's a county road. Uh, Belleville, we can put a traffic detail there to get some data, which we've done before. Now the county, uh, has put their, their roads, um, their radar signs there, flashing lights. I live on Union Avenue, so I, I know it well, we've seen that. So with that one gentleman that we've been communicating with, as a matter of fact, twice today, he initially said that he wants to get a speed bump. And our police department, our, our chief is here with us, we traditionally in Belleville, there's not really any speed bumps because not only do cars slow down, but emergency vehicles have to slow down as well. So then he said, well, I hope to get rumble strips. And we, we, anybody emails me, I always give the courtesy of response. So we've been emailing back and forth and I said, rumble strips sound great, they traditionally don't slow anybody down. And if you want, you know, there's a, a, always a positive and a negative reaction to everything we do here, you may see that today. So, we've done rumble strips before, they're on Doralon Street outside the rec house. I can show you my office and show you the petitions from people that live there but want them ripped out because they make too much noise, all they hear long is they hear the cars, trucks rumbling over them. So what we can do is our, our police chief is here, I'm certain we'll make that intersection patrol division lookout, but we are gonna wait for data to come back from the county. Those radar things are not just blinking in your face, they're actually collecting data. So once they collect them, they end, they say how many cars passed, average speed and all that.
Speed, you know.
And then they can make some recommendations, but the fact of a speed bump, it's, it's gonna be, I don't see the county doing a speed bump there. We can step up enforcement, I know the chief will do that, uh, and it's just a constant thing that we have to deal with. Speeding, I mean, second to taxes and what cars are the second biggest complaint that we deal with, whether it's parking or driving, uh, and it's, it's an epidemic throughout, not just Belleville, but whole towns.
Just the way they mark on the corners and, you know, block the walkways.
We will, show the chief, put a patrol lookout there, uh, Union and, Overlook, Union Overlook? Right, got it, thank you, thank you for your time. Anybody else, sir? I'm working my way this way, I guess, sir.
Good evening. Valentino Nucci Jr., 62 Cedar Hill Avenue in Belleville, on the corner of Mare. We have a speeding problem on that corner. We only have one stop sign going from Mare Street to Mare Street, not on Cedar Hill. Everyone on the planet is speeding down that road. I am disabled, I'm home all the time. I see this, I'm sitting on my front porch and I see this every day, and someone's either gonna get killed. Because I've already had, I talk to the crossing guard jury every day and there's numerous times that either they're speeding down there and she almost gets hit. And so, that's basically it.
So, as I said to you earlier, thank you for being here, thank you for, for sharing. You could always email me or, or email the, the police.
I have.
Okay, so what happens is that we would then put a, a traffic detail there, our traffic department is excellent at that. I don't know if they've done that already, at your request or at the chief's request?
My only problem is this, yes, I have, I was called by Frank DiMatero about that. And he told me to contact you, to kind of, and also, uh, but the, the times that they take a look at that, it's not the times that it happens. It happens like when they're all duties, like we're talking like 7 o'clock in the morning.
So if we put one of our radar cameras, that radar camera collects data?
So I stand definitely. That was, that, I've been living here for three years so far, at that particular address.
We look at that.
And no one's ever done that, as far as I know.
Chief is, uh, yeah, we'll take care of it. Maybe a four-way stop sign's in order, maybe.
That's, that's, that's perfect, four-way stop signs.
What I know now, just so you know, the way it works is, I get emails all the time. I send them to the police department, traffic department, or somebody comes like yourself. They're gonna perform a study. We don't necessarily counsel as an arbitrarily just create a stop sign, a four-way stop sign. It's based on recommendation. So, you saw today on second reading, we took action on deleting a, a specific location. We get those recommendations from the police or traffic department, and the council acts on them. Usually there, we agree with them 100% and we vote on it, but the first step is to get that, the accurate study, so they can take the data and make a recommendation.
Like I said, the, the, the times that you look at it is when it doesn't happen.
Well, yeah, but if they put that radar, but if that radar's there for three days, four days-
That part's different.
Yeah, it'll collect all the data.
I was told that someone was actually sitting there.
No.
Okay. Sir, if I drive the bikes, if you courts, pull the car, you won't know, you won't even know it's there.
Okay.
Probably, you may or may not, but it's not that, it's not that.
Like I said, I'm home all the time. I, I, I see everything at that corner now. No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, uh, Mr. Sheldon in the back?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, voice in the Floyd Street. Number of things to discuss tonight. First of all, last two meetings, most controversy about the water situation. Mr. Melon, you keep saying that it's billed by linear foot. To Mrs. Karan's credit, she correctly started saying cubic feet. Water is measured by volume, not by, by length. So, please, just for the record, future, it's cubic feet, not linear feet. Um, during your monologue, you expressed your concern about the calculations you used to establish these water rate increases. And if I heard you correctly, you said that it's your belief that there are maybe 10 times more commercial properties in this township than is currently reflected. Out of curiosity, do you know approximately how many commercial properties we have in Bellville?
So, I know that they were using the number 118. We also know that the data that we received from our tax accessories office says it's around 700 commercial properties. That doesn't necessarily mean commercial businesses. Therefore, I said that I think it's about 10 times, it'd be about 1,000.
All right. Well, uh, just for your application, if you look at the user-friendly budget for Township 2019, it indicates that there are, just for everyone's information, there are 8,395 ratable residential properties, 502 commercial, and 116 industrial properties. So, there are some other categories, but we added up to over 9,000 properties in the township. By the way, um, since you took over the website for me, none of the user-friendly budgets have been posted to the Township website.
I, you know this, Michael. I don't create that content. When the CFO or the tax officer who fires all this, it's published.
They, they create it. You're supposed, you're running the Township website.
I post the content that we're giving.
And I make sure the user-friendly budget's open. In fact, if you go to the state website, this township has not produced the user-friendly budgets for either 2018 nor for 2020. The 2019 user-friendly budget has been produced, and it's not been posted. So, please, please take care of that as soon as possible. It makes it a lot easier for laypeople like myself to understand the minutia of the township's budget. Now, uh, you started again this evening by saying that there's a $1.6 million deficit. When one of the speakers spoke to Mr. Iacano, the number had, he said 1.4 million. So, I guess if we continue this meeting a few more hours, we might get it down to zero.
That very well could have, that very well could have been, there was a $200,000 surplus that we used to pay down the debt, which we owed 1.4 million dollars.
But the water deficit right now, the number is 1.6 million.
The money that we actually owe Newark right now is 1.4. You could have paid down the 200,000.
All right, all right, well-
Wait, Tom, I want the correct information. Somebody can give it to me.
1.6 is what we own, we're in a deficit of 1.4.
Which is exactly what I just said. So, I use 1.6, Mr. Iacano use 1.4, because we had $200,000 that could be allocated toward that.
All right, that's fine. Well, if, if the issue over the water rate increase is this deficit, rule of thumb, there are about 10,000 taxable properties in Bellville, give or take. So, I always use, when I do any calculations, whether it's through this body or on the port of ed, it's roughly $100 per median household generates a million dollars. So, if, if the deficit is 1.6 million, then there should just be a one-time surplus of $160 on the median assessment, and we would have this deficit to Newark satisfied. But yet, there's every indication that these water rate increases of 200, 300, or more percent are here for perpetuity. This is just not a one-time increase for this quarter. These rates are gonna stand for as long as possible, which leads me to say, a lot of us believe that what was, what's happened here is that you deliberately increased the water rates, hoping that none of us would be the wiser, essentially to have a backdoor tax, and then it worked, what to blame it on Ross Rock in Newark. And that was, instead of doing-
Very creative thinking.
But you, you watch, instead of keeping, of keeping the property taxes to $300 to increase this year, you decided to cleverly shift the extra tax revenue to another area and blame it on Newark.
You know, Mr. Sheldon, I don't decide to do anything. Everything comes before this board. You're here at every single meeting. We discuss it openly. You're able to comment on it. I don't sit home and think of these things.
You're, you're ahead on show, yet you admitted that you didn't know the numbers, you don't know the numbers. You believe that the people that report to you miscalculated.
I don't believe it. I know that.
So, you don't stop here. You're, you're ultimately responsible.
And I think, I think my opening monologue could express that.
You also, a few moments ago, weren't quite sure if there's a water sale. There has been a water sale and a tax sale in this township for at least the last several years.
I think I looked to my right, and I said, "I believe you sell that by a water sale."
It's been true, because you weren't sure. Perhaps if you hadn't been legally residing in Lippers for the last several years, you'd be more familiar with the tax situation you're in Bellville.
On that note, Mr. Sheldon, your time is up.
Well, you've had, you've taken part, I've taken your responsibility. I have a couple more things to say.
Quickly.
You should also make point, appoint a fact that for the water sale, two of the council members here are delinquent in their one, one of their own water bills. One of your colleagues hasn't paid water taxes, water bills for almost two years. So, do you think you did, especially given the subtax, or healthcare benefits, or do you try to do speaking in organs that will give free water to the council members, so that they don't have to pay their own bills?
Everything is not an conspiracy, Mike.
Oh, right. I only have a couple more.
I do need to, I, I, beyond your time. So, a couple more things is not gonna work.
This, Mario asked earlier, is it true that-
Excuse me, excuse me, this is not a back-and-forth conversation. I cannot have audience members screaming out. It's not, it's just not gonna happen here.
You were asked earlier by Mario Groves, is it true that Marlo Hittman is now the township to the library?
As is typical, Mario was wrong, and you're wrong.
I, I didn't say yes, I didn't say, I asked you a question, yes or no?
No.
All right, thank you. I only wanted that, that part.
Just because you read something or somebody says it, doesn't mean it's true.
That's why I'm here to ask you. You told us the truth or your article. So, I'm asking you if Ms. Hittman was the library council, because Ms. Hittman is your, what is your personal attorney, and she is your attorney in the lawsuit that you brought against Mayor Kimball, Tom Drawlman, and me.
Thank you.
Which I hope we will have our day in court in January, so I can show the disgraceful way both you and Ms. Hittman have conducted yourself in trying to implicate me in this matter.
Your time is up, Mr. Sheldon.
I have no last thing to say.
Quickly.
Uh, Ms. Karan, I know Ms. Karan doesn't live in Bellville, but through the chair, I just would like to know, Ms. Karan, you're, you're-
Excuse me, Michael, speaking through the chair and then directing the question, it doesn't count. You have to, you have to address it.
Well, you can answer, and you can answer this. Is Ms. Karan living in Washington Township?
I'm unaware of that. I'm not sure what relevance it has.
Do you want to, direction?
I'm not gonna waste these people's time, so where one of our employees lives, it has no bearing on-
I'm not asking for a particular street address. I just would like to know-
It has no bearing on, on this conversation.
Well, all right. I, I've done my Google, my, my search in Washington Township. I just would like to say for the record, it's an interesting coincidence that your CFO, who you're throwing under the bus on the water situation, that Washington Township also happens to be the hometown of Bruce Greger, the same person who runs Flaherty Security. That's the company that the previous Board of Education, your buddies, who plunged our port of ed-
We're connecting a lot of dots on it.
... deficit, necessitated a criminal investigation ongoing by the Attorney General, required a state monitor to be appointed here, that Bruce Greger also happens to live in Washington Township.
Wow, okay.
It seems that no good ever comes to Bellville.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. You have connected all those dots for everybody. We appreciate that. Thank you.
So, go over side here?
Francis Corry, 134 Snowwood Avenue. First, thank you, because I've emailed you a few things, and you were very responsive. I appreciate that. However, all in town, you call, it's hidden miss, if you want to get call back in some week.
So, ju- just a part of the improvements that we're trying to make. I've sent three emails to this. I want all the telephone lines in town all recorded, because as the young lady we spoke earlier saying she called, she can't get an answer, she gets the wrong information. I wanna know who they're calling, who they're speaking to, what time it was. We've gotten two proposals now, and we're probably gonna have to respond, phone lines recorded, so we can, we know who we're talking to.
It's very important. It depends on who picks the phone up, whether we actually get call back, or it just dies. Couple of quick things, and real question. Um, commercial property is supposed to be more than double the water rate?
It's, I know everybody likes the, it's easy, you can determine triple and double. It really depends on usage. You're charged X initially, it is more, and then at a certain point, access.
I looked at, on the access, some of the, what I think would be heavy use of some of laundries and all, and just about everyone was around a doubling of their rate. Mine was a double of mine. I use nowhere near what they use. How can we even save up?
Um, that part I cannot, I'm blocking any of that.
Is anybody going to go through, it was, oh my God, your water is going to kill people if you don't do something? The letter actually scares us. We don't, we're not, I have to go to the water department, and no one's actually holding back. Uh, how do I get on a list to have somebody come out and verify? Again, you have a problem with your lines, or we have a problem beyond you?
We, we could definitely look at, send me that, you had my email, we've communicated before. Send me that. I'm curious what that letter said that caused that kind of alarm. There's only two letters that go out. Uh, I'm familiar with both of them. One is the, uh, the orthophosphate, which is about the lead. The other one is the contaminant. But that contaminant, you would have to drink, uh, 50 gallons of water a day for 30 years to have any negative side of it. Usually world numbers, but-
That's why I-
If you send me that letter, I'd like to look at it.
Just 400 to get finished.
Send me that letter, and I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know we're on this side. Man, well, I'll get you next, okay? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll get you. We're gonna stay here till we speak. It's okay.
Hi, Bellville 66 November 3. Um, as you know, it's just me and my mom, and we lost the, only $70 of water, we're paying for a lunch. As many of you are here, you're not happy with your water bill, neither am I. So, me and my mom, I lost my dad and her brother as a child. It's not easy. I'm working in a shop right now, I'm cleaning houses. It's not easy. It's not easy for any of us. We're just getting a dad, first of all. Um, I'm young, I have, I'm really young. People have been here a while, and I have been in my house for 18 years. Came in when I was two. Had to grow up, understood. Now, I understand that money is really tight right now, but was this deficit all of a sudden, or was this known from? Because if this is from 2012, 2014, in my opinion, it should have been gradually raised with a warning, not all of a sudden, as I understand.
That sounds lo- that sounds logical. Unfortunately, logical, but I'll, I'll explain it to you when you get it.
Um, I, I've, I've heard explained. I get it. I know you're gonna think in a way, you know, I hear. Um, another thing, dog, uh, people, dogs, that they walk their dogs, they don't clean up after themselves. Um, it's a big issue. I heard that. Well, I got a letter saying with the fines, um, party, it's me and my mom. I wake up at 6:30 in the m- 5:30 in the morning to go to work. My mom works same time as I do. We have a party going from about, what, 8 o'clock at night till 5:00 in the morning. I don't like calling the cops on people. I hate that. I have, unfortunately, I have a big heart, which I don't call the cops on people. The dog is out, so the dog knows how long. It's barking, it's making noise. I can't sleep. My mother can't sleep. Nobody can sleep.
So, the, as I tell everybody, the only recourse you have is coming here, and I'll listen to you every time you come, and every time you speak, we'll listen to you. The chief is here, we know the address now, but as I tell residents, and the chief would be the first one to tell you, you're not bothering the police if you call them. I get residents that email me all hours of the night telling me about loud music, and I say, "You have to call it in to the police." I don't wanna bother them. You're, you're not bothering them, but if you want the situation resolved, you have to. And they're trained. They're, they're not gonna come in and break up the house, and they're trained, they're professional. They're gonna knock on your door, they're gonna say this complaint. They're not gonna give your name. They're not gonna arrest people, give tickets. They're, they're trained on how to handle this. And trust me, you're, you're not bothering them. But I, I wish I had a button that I could fix it for you every time someone emailed. I can't. The only thing I can do is email the police department or call the police department. The only thing to do, you have to call it in.
So, I did, I, so, I guess some of my, I don't know who called. There was a cop, cops were calling. The next week was the same thing. The following week was the same thing. The following week was the same thing. I guess our neighbors got tired of calling the cops. They're not doing anything.
So, after, so we have a CAD system, the chief, the chief can say, but once we know that we've been there a couple times, then they'll escalate. Then they're gonna issue a ticket, then they'll issue more tickets eventually. I, my mother lives on Drawlman Street. There was an abandoned house next to her for many, many years that had parties all night long. And all I kept telling her is, "You have to call the pol-" Calling me at 2:00 in the morning, I would tell her, "It's not gonna, not gonna lower the music. You have to call the police." And eventually, they know trouble houses, they know issues. First time, they're gonna be nice, they're gonna ask you kindly. Second time, maybe a little more. But once, you know, they work shifts, so they traditionally are gonna be the same police officers in that sector that you're gonna deal with. And I know people don't like to bother the police, or you don't wanna rat anybody out, but it's, it's, if you want the change, you have to do that.
Okay, so what about the dog lease? Because I have a sign, and it was knocked over a couple of times. Trying to find out who was, like, doing it. I can't find out who it is, because I would just tell them myself. I mean, the dog lease, the local police, I'm not gonna be fined over someone else's dog. I, I don't have a dog, I'm allergic. I can't have a dog.
And you won't be fined on that. You get the new sign, you probably get a sign there. It's hard to track that information.
Oh, yeah, I understand, because, I mean-
And I would just give your information to Mr. Walter here, because from 17 to that number, doesn't, just the two of you, doesn't sound like that's correct.
Okay.
They're very well-
It was a couple quarters, and then, and then it went up. I mean, it was 110 more or less, and now it's just, I stepped up to 300 all the time. So, yeah.
Yeah, you give it to him, we'll, we'll check it out for you.
Okay.
Okay? Sorry about that.
And, um, was this gradually, or what, did this come?
Oh, I apologize. So, when the rate went out of contract, Bellville, prior to me, and I'm not blaming, I'm just explaining, okay? Can't really account for things that happened before I was here. I can just explain what happened. So, after the rate expired, Newark just kept billing us the whole rate until we renewed. Bellville chose not to renew for many, many years. And when we finally did get into conversations about renewing, they said, "Once you sign the new lease, the new agreement, contract, you have to then make up for the arrears." So, I can't say weeks I wasn't here, but it wasn't something that would have been picked up at that point. It would have had to be dealt with almost a year. It happens all the time. We negotiate labor contracts, our police, our fire, our DPDW, they're out of contract, and it takes us a year or so to negotiate them. Soon as we negotiate a new rate, a lot of times we go the retro backwards. It's, it's pretty normal, unfortunately. But we, we could not anticipate, and I wasn't here to really anticipate it, but, uh, the rates, I had said the rates were 2012 or 14, Mr. Frank Antoni, I think said 15. So, we went five years without an increase. I can tell you that every year, it's supposed to tick up a little bit, so it's not hit you in the face like that. And the reason Mr. Iacano gave a good explanation, that once the state knew when our budget, we had that deficit, they make us fill that. And the only way to do it was the, the next quarter to actually do it.
Okay, well, did this, did this deficit happen when you came in, or was it spoken upon when you came into office?
I, I knew that we were out of, yeah, I knew that we were out of contract about maybe six months after coming in, and then we immediately started talking. And it was not until we got close to negotiating the final terms, did we even think that we owed the difference. Uh, I think town attorney probably called me up and said, "Guess what? We owe Newark 1.6 million dollars now." I couldn't understand that, because I just figured, "You're out of contract, you're paying the last rate." I didn't think that there would be that, that middle ground that we had to pick up.
So, does the contract just end for this?
No, contract ended years ago.
Okay, so why is it happening all of a sudden now?
Because, Mr. Iacano explained that once the state was, once we became aware of the deficit, 1.6 million, which we owed 1.4 of that, once the state became aware of it, we couldn't pass our budget without showing the revenue to pay that back. That revenue to pay that back would have been the last quarter's tax.
And now you have it now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's all. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Make sure you give, uh, Mr. Walter the information. I saw somebody-
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Um, Newark has COVID testings everywhere. We can't go, because we're not Newark- We can't go because we're not Newark residents. Are we gonna have one COVID testing type or are we just gonna have that one?
We've done three already in Belville.
Oh, I only know that one.
Yes, we've done three already, I'm sorry, we've done two already in Belville and they're scheduling a third. But just so you know, anybody knows, COVID nineteen, EssexCOVID.org. So EssexCOVID.org is the county program. The county brings it to us, they brought it to us twice on my mayor's call today. They're gonna bring it to us a third time, but you don't have to wait for it to be in Belville. So you go to EssexCOVID.org, you can register, it's free, and wherever the county's doing it that week, you can go.
Are we gonna get a call about the COVID testing happening this time? Or are we just gonna?
When, when it comes to Belville, you'll see it on the township website, social media, my social media.
Are we gonna get a call?
Uh, we could probably do a call.
Can we do that because I was, I was.
We could probably do that, but I would, you can check the schedule right now if you want. Yeah. Okay?
Thank you.
I saw somebody on this side, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Rosas, my address is one eighty seven Indian Avenue. And I'm happy to be here, it's my first time, very excited. Um, I got my fourth year in Belville this past October thirteenth, which I was very happy, still happy, but a lot of concerns. During my time, like before coming to Belville, of course, I did researches and everything else. And Belville was the ideal time for me to go. However, during the course of these four years, I have a testing crisis which I was not expecting. And when I went to actually find out, they told me because it was, it signs the assessment that the previous landlord did a full renovation of the kitchen. Went to a full renovation, apparently how the issue was, was in two thousand or six, I believe. So however, I got here and it was not way around to change that. So now, two years ago, uh, it was, uh, a kind of house that is a fire hydrant that actually was a leak or something that the town, I don't know if it was DPW, came to fix that. They should did a sloppy job that they, they, they were open horrible, and they have it now coming back. So then, I guess a month ago, yes, I think a month ago when we, one, uh, the beginning of this month, it was, they were fixing the road and I guess because of water pipes, I am not quite sure what it was, what they were fixing. And actually, they fixed half of the road and they gave the other half, which is my side, not fixed. So I don't know if they're gonna come back to fix the whole road or how they're doing half.
I know you said initial, what was it, excuse me again?
Linden Avenue?
Linden, that could have been PSC and J, okay.
So, I think it was PSC. So they actually did a half of the road anyway. So they gave the other half for the road, especially my side. However, that time when they came in, they wanted to utilize water from the fire hydrant and they noticed that the fire hydrant doesn't have no water at all. So I don't know how, if that is DP that would, that would prove responsibility to go around or the fire department to go and check and see if that actually working, I am not sure. Right now, they just, they just, they just take it and I believe they're gonna replace it.
Is that right in front of your house or is there a different? What's the number again?
One eighty seven.
One eighty seven?
One eighty seven, Linden.
Bobby, you have that? Just write down one eighty seven Linden Hydrant. Okay.
Uh, I call, I forgot what is the department. Uh, I forgot, they mentioned that yes, they probably have that bigger work, whatever, they probably is gonna replace it. That's, the actual fire department came, which they are unable to fix it because they, they don't have the ability to fix it, they take it, just, just like that. However, it's a big issue, right? It's a big issue, it's a big, big issue for everybody. Anyway, however, now, uh, the hole or whatever they fixed two years ago is still horrible. And I don't understand why they also not including that side of the road to be fixed.
Yes, so PSC and G unfortunately, when they dig up one side of the road, they, they, and we have no authority over that. They dig up one side of the road to replace, I think they went with high pressure gas lines. They only replace the side of, they replace the entire side of the road that they put their line down the middle. Unfortunately, that's what they do. And the hole that you speak of is a hole in the street?
It was over and on street.
Okay.
So it was over, but I don't know what materials they used, but it went down, you know?
Got it.
And then cars passed by and then it's gonna be.
Got it, no problem. So one eighty seven Linden, a hydrant, and then look at the, the tip of the road, we can fill that. That's something we can actually do. It's a temporary solution, but.
Whatever, I guess many people, the new faces like myself are here because of the water. I do understand, I heard your explanation in the other house, however, I believe and I need somebody to actually check my water, I think I have a leak or something because this actual last deal I got, it was a lot of roofs, the crazy ones, but prior to that, I didn't complain, I didn't call anybody. It was so, so high. High that it was not normal.
That probably does mean leave that.
And again, I was thinking, okay, it's summer, I also, I would actually try to put a nice bron and everything else, but I think this is ridiculous. So I'm asking for somebody to also check on my house for.
That number we're gonna need your phone number for. But you can give that also to Mr. Walter over there, so we have a hydrant, we have a dip in the road, we have, we're gonna check your water.
Perfect, then I, I guess my, my time is over, unfortunately. Oh, sorry, this, the home improvement program.
Yes.
If I apply, you know, of course, I am lucky to have it, right now I don't have a job. I lost my job like many other people because of the pandemic. That home improvement will be affected as far as the payers? Means like, in turn, if you have home improvement, of course, it's gonna affect your tax. But this, this program will be affected?
Chief, we have two different programs now. We have the one that you can take advantage that depending on your income would actually pay twenty five thousand dollars in improvements. And I think it might, you're gonna also qualify under a new program, which is our area leader rehabilitation, which now the whole town qualifies for. And if you do a certain type of improvement, addition, a new roof, you don't necessarily pay the increase on that taxes right away. It's, it's staggered over five years. But we can get you that information.
Okay, and when this start program?
So we're, right now, we're registering contractors for that first program. So the homeowners aren't, aren't ready yet to take advantage of that one yet. But once that's ready, the other programs are ready in place to stagger your taxes out so you don't have to pay the improvement right away.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so please give Mr. Walter your phone. Anybody else still over here, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Lydia and I live in one fifty one Drawlman Street between Linden Avenue and Washington. Uh, I emailed you maybe a couple of months ago, you responded to my email right away. Um, I have an issue with the traffic. Spinning all the time, traffic is, I mean, we can't even open the door to get out of the car, cross the street. You sent the, I guess, the police officer and the driver by my door, by my, by my side of the house. However, they took it out right away, maybe like last three days. And after that, we didn't have anything else. I'm not asking for a traffic light or a stop sign or anything like that. Uh, something that we can cross the street. If we park, I don't have a driveway in my house, so I have to literally park on the street. They don't load my car. We have to ram to cross the street. I don't think it's, it's right. You know, you have children, you have older people, my neighbors are older now and they're always complaining about the problem with the traffic. If you can please do something both ways, not only going into towards Washington Street, the other, the opposite street as well, because it's both way, the traffic, it's, I don't know, is it county road?
Yeah, I could follow up with, with the chief on that. I do remember the email. I, I think I even told you that I grew up right there at one ninety six, my mom was still there. So she backs out of the driveway and I spent thirty something years of my life there, so I'm very familiar with the street. And just like Union Avenue, it was very high traffic and there's not much we can do. I'm assuming that it did analyze the data and they don't see a huge uptick in speeding. They can't recommend a change in that. I know, I know the block you're on perfectly well. It wouldn't work for a street, uh, it wouldn't work for a light, it wouldn't, obviously, we don't do, uh, speed bumps or rumble strips. We could just do more enforcement there probably. Uh, so we'll get the radar back out there, we'll get some more data and see if any changes.
I mean, the radar was only there for three to four days in the form of that, so I don't think that's enough time.
Well, it's there twenty four hours. It gets a lot, and most people don't realize that it's just not there to warn people. It's actually there where we collect the data. So then they download that data and they know how many cars passed with the average speed was. They know all that data. And from there, they make the recommendations to us. But we can, the chief is here now, he's making notes, so I'm sure that we can get that back.
My neighbors are right next door, one fifty seven, they were so happy, they say, you know, Lydia, finally, they're gonna do something about it. And it's still the same issue, we can't even cross the street. And I think as a resident, we need to do something, it's with so many accidents, uh, now, too long ago, there was a motorcycle accident on the street. And, and.
I see many of them.
It is bad, really, really bad. Now, I have my aunt Rosa Delbaia here and I'm gonna try to translate for her.
Sure.
Oh, she wants to speak for herself. I'm gonna use not to look correct, but yes. Okay, I'm here because I'm worried about the water. It's terrible to taste, the color, and we can't drink that water, it's very, very bad. And also the water springs up, grease, rice. I understand, I can't even drink the water from my refrigerator. My refrigerator with a filter, with the ice and water, and I can't drink because it tastes very, very bad.
So what I tell, and I don't know if you want to translate or, what I tell residents all the time, I get emails all the time, and you know how fast I respond, about brown water and people think that, you know, the water in Belville is terrible. So brown water, and I know that's not an issue, it's an issue, but just an example. Brown water usually means there's either a break somewhere in the line close by to you that our DPW's out repairing, which brings up the stuff and the rust. Uh, or somewhere along the way, we're flushing out the lines and it's bringing that all up. So the water that we purchase, which is the subject of today's, most of today's conversation, the rates and all that, it's not gonna be brown, it's not gonna be discolored. So there very well may be an issue with your, and I keep saying the word residential service line. So we bring the water down in the big main, down the middle of the street, for lack of a better word. And then you have a residential line that connects to that. You may have an issue there with, with your line because your water should not be discolored or taste funny at all. Uh, it, it shouldn't do that. So that would be something that you would have, I don't know if we have a camera, we can look at that, but usually if a water router, somebody can put a camera in, they do that for sewer lines, I don't know if they do it for water lines. Where you should really have that looked at and that's not, that's not a municipal issue though. Uh, smell, discoloration, discoloration would be if we have a break or we're cleaning out a line. But if you have that constantly, I, I do have a resident that emails me all the time and I see her bathtub is, is filthy. And I tell her all the time, that's, that's not the water that's good, it's something happening in your line. Because no other neighbors are complaining about the same thing. So I would have that checked.
Yeah, but the taste is still very bad, even the, none of the colors taste.
Yeah, it shouldn't be though, that's, it shouldn't be. It's, that might be an issue with your line.
But I still receive the letters that the water is not right.
Right. So the, yeah, the waters are, we're obligated to notice residents when, when the testing doesn't meet, but that would, what's, what you're being noticed for is not, would not create that. They, they would, they would, they really would, I would give that checked out though.
Any fix for that, any way to fix that problem?
Yeah.
You say?
Then, I know they can check for, for leaks. If you want to give Mr. Walter your information, they could probably come by and take a peek, but they can't perform the, the service or especially if it's on your side of the, of the line.
No, but you have two filters, three filters, and you say the water tastes bad. So what happened in my days, uh, it is not, that was maybe two, two years ago, we replaced the main water pipe into the house because we had a break, uh, the water was leaking for two weeks and I would eat the whole, the whole bunch. So my whole mind is running in. However, um, I saw three filters in my house, one, two under the sink, the kitchen, and the one in the refrigerator. So just to make sure that I was drinking the same water, I sent it to be analyzed and it came back high chemicals, um, and also heart water. So they can go back into the house and test the water again, but I don't know why it's still.
Yeah, I would, I would contact that contractor that did that replacement. There's, there's something, there's an issue there that's, I would love to be able to direct.
My mind is running in.
I think there's an issue with it though, I, I would contact that contractor. I would. But that's not the symptoms of, of our issue. But if you give Mr. Walter your information, we will post that specific thing again. Okay? Don't forget.
Okay, and the taxes also is very high, it's terrible. Taxes fifty thousand, my, terrible.
Thank you. See you back, ma'am.
Carmela Fleischmaker, three H three Belville, how are you? Long time busy. Glad to see everyone's doing healthy and good. Uh, firstly, I'd like to commend the commission, the town council, the mayor, um, about the lovely, um, cherry blossom mural, that's the word. Now, are you gonna be continuing throughout the town with that or is that gonna be one spot?
So it's one very, very large mural, as you brought it up. Uh, there is another one already scheduled that's historic, uh, the, the theme of it is gonna be Belville's history. And these are grants, by, by the way, that we got to actually do that. And one, there's one more scheduled and then we're gonna have some little stuff here and there.
Very nice, okay. Um, I would like to donate this to the police department. This was made in honor of the Glen Ridge officer, uh, Rob.
Charles Roberts.
Thank you. Charles Roberts. Um, it's, you know, dedicated to the fallen police. Um, and I believe the police department should have this. So, I don't know, can I give to the chief?
Give it to this gentleman or anyone, thank you.
Thank you.
He'll give it to the chief, thank you.
I think we have new friends this evening. A lot of new friends, interesting. Um, you know, we're in the, we're in the, our building, so we don't, we're not affected really by the, we're, you know, our rates are kinda set and things like that. And our building was after, was built after fifty two. Um, it seems to me that, and again, I understand you're probably in there short of time. Okay, and, you know, bear of short time in this regime.
Excuse me, one second, ma'am, in the back? Thank you. Sorry, sorry.
It's okay. It seems to me that it's a lot of passing of the buck.
It did sound that way, which is why I said I'm not blaming, I'm explaining, but.
Right.
I get it.
And I understand, like I said, you and I have had our words, you know, through the years or whatever. But again, this problem doesn't seem to be going away.
No, we're gonna fix it.
No, no, this particular problem doesn't seem to be going away. Of, you know, blaming the former, blaming the past. If you, if we, y'all knew about these problems, and again, you know, we're not gonna sit here and go, okay, well, what line did you see, what line did you see? When is it going to stop of blaming, not just on this, on all of the issues that come up with the taxes, this and that? When is it gonna stop?
I honestly think that we have basically tackled everything there's a tackle. We've settled all the lawsuits. Hundreds of thousands, if not just over a million dollars in lawsuits, all settled, no new ones. Uh, after the township manager, who probably shouldn't have been here, left, Mr. Two Chief replaced him for three years, not one lawsuit. We've now had Mr. Icorno for about a year and a half, not one lawsuit. So those lawsuits are gone. When I got elected, we were, every single labor contract was, was out. We had to negotiate them, we did. We had to pay retro, we did. That part's done, thank God. Uh, water issues now, not only we dealing with the one point six million that we owe NORC. We've signed the contract now, we're tackling at least four hundred lead service fund replacements and we're working on a program to replace. and we're working on a program to replace all that service line. So that issue's gone. The budget, this year was a big budget hit. Why? Because for years, the budgets weren't adding up correctly, and everybody was kicking the ball, kicking the can down the road. I have no problem explaining exactly what the problems are. And people like to say, when I explain that I'm blaming, I can't explain it any other way. I tell people the facts. I tell them what we're doing to handle it. They could interpret that as blaming. I'm just trying to explain to residents the situation we're in, what we're doing about it. I'm not going to bury my head. It's not going to happen. We are righting the shit. We've settled all lawsuits, gone. No lawsuits on the beat, by the way. Settled all labor contracts that were all expired to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. We had to pay out in retro, which is why your taxes went up probably a year or so ago. The NORC issue, the rates increases, we've dealt with that. We've dealt with just about everything. And I think this year's budget, it was a hit. I wasn't happy about it, but I think this year's budget finally set us straight that we can deal with everything we have to deal with. I don't find anything else that I think is going to pop up. I could be wrong.
So all lawsuits, and we'll take care. What about your lawsuit against the town? Has that been taken care of?
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, just like you said...
As well as the lawsuits that happened when the prior township manager fired people illegally, $450,000 of taxpayer money. Another one of $325,000, you guys paid that out. You like to sit there and talk about, you know, specific ones, but we never talk about overall. $1.1 million lawsuit paid out. That's a lot of money being paid out. My lawsuit was not paid out, by the way.
And I understand that that's the one that popped into my head at the moment? Of course, because I'm, you know, because I associate, you know, with your, you know, the prior problem you had. But so, no new surprises, hopefully?
No, and just to add on to that point is the fact that no full-time town manager. Now we have a full-time professional township manager with a master's degree and actually teaches this stuff in college. Never had a CFO, so you wonder why our books weren't right. You wonder why the budgets were always screwy. You wonder why nobody caught the fact that the water rate expired, we're paying one. We never had a CFO. As a matter of fact, since we're talking about lawsuits, we had a CFO many years ago. She was fired illegally, cost us $90,000 in a settlement because she was trying to expose an overtime scam. Overtime scam was never dealt with. She was fired. We paid out $90,000, again before me, but I had a settlement. Now we have a full-time CFO. Now people want to tackle where she lives. I mean, it's a little crazy. We are steering, we are righting the shit. We have the full-time professionals in place. I think we're tackling things. I'm not going to kick the can, I'm not going to bury my head. It's easy. I understand why previous mayors were able to coast for 16 years, because they didn't tackle anything. I have no problem tackling it. I have no problem facing the people, I have no problem explaining it. I really don't.
Wait, no, I know you don't. That's, that's all one thing.
And I think people are owed an explanation.
No, no, that's fine. But, you know, you're talking about the previous administration. Weren't you part of the previous administration at one point?
20 years ago.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, so you got that on that one. 20 years ago, I was part of the previous administration.
Okay. So with these problems 20 years ago?
No.
Okay. You know, all of a sudden, these things seem to just pop up?
No, they took 16 years, 15 years. Factor that in with a lack of development. Factor that in with a lack of new ratables. Factor that in we didn't build anything to offset the tax base. The burden goes to the residential taxpayer. Sorry, but Bluefield, Montclair, Harrison, they all built, they all developed, they all got new ratables. Those ratables are extra revenue. Therefore, the burden doesn't go to the residential taxpayer. We didn't build really anything in about 15 years, substantial. That's your big thing.
And also, you know, again...
I do need you to wrap up this. The buzzer needs to go off.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Iacono. I'm a compliment. Like I said, just hopefully no new surprises. Now, if I understood you correctly, you were speaking of the commercial billing for the order bill. Instead of billing them quarterly, you could bill them monthly?
Right.
Why can't you do that with the residents?
Probably could, man. Our ordinance says quarterly. The reason why that we did that for certain commercial properties, because if it's a car wash or something, they use a lot of water, they'd rather just pay a monthly bill, get a larger bill three times that quarterly.
Yeah, I believe if you ask the residents that question, if you need to pay something on a monthly basis as opposed to a quarterly basis. And I'm sorry, I don't know that gentleman.
Mr. Iacono?
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Um, never, you know, not been to meetings last couple of months, obviously. What he said was, you know, they have to pay, all the order bills have to be paid upfront, blah, blah, blah. They can't send payments in. I don't believe that's correct.
That was a specific use because we were closing our budget out. That was a very unique situation that happened.
Okay. But again, with the residents, they cannot make monthly payments? If, if the gentleman...
They would be able to. If we amend our ordinance to go from quarterly to monthly, if we then amended our billing software, if we amended our rates, we could probably do that.
But also, even without changing anything right now, if I have a $1,000 water bill and I'm not working, where do you expect that money to come from? You know, and, you know, I don't think it's fair. And again, we understand that this was sprung upon us, blah, blah, blah. I don't think it's fair that people are expected to come up with this astronomical water bill, you know, in a 30-day or 60-day period. There has to be legal. There has to be. I mean, I understand it's a whole process of shutting people off, blah, blah, blah.
We're not shutting anybody off.
No, no, I understand. But you have to give people a fair share to actually make a payment, because...
I'm hoping that part of the credit that's going to come is actually going to offset that.
Right. Legally, if somebody pays $5 on a bill, you can't go after them. That's how it is in medicine. That's how it should be around this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Sir?
How you doing? Good. Remember I'm here to see the Hill? I just want to thank him. He's doing his last night and tonight, he comes to stay, but he's not a good time. I watched him last night do it too. I might just have a couple of quick questions. I'm taking a break from the water. I'm sorry to be answering up. The home improvement, will there be a difference between structural and like cosmetic? Will that be taken into account as far as the, as far as the people that apply? Like, will one be given...
I don't know the exact, I know we're voting on the manual tonight. I know that it is owner occupied, one family. I think also two of his owner occupy. We, we're voting on the residential today. I'm not exactly sure if the shareholders included them. But right now, we're just registering the contract. We're really going to be explaining that program once the contract is registered and we're ready for you.
Okay, cool. One more thing. I think it forward, and you said that before, I like that because I'm kind of COVID burned out. And I want to know that eventually, somehow, they're thinking about when it's all over or we're not just hunkering down. I did see last month, they talked about all the new development, which I, nobody brought up tonight amazingly, because they normally do. But are you going to give the people that move in something to do? Are we going to have more business for them to spend their money? Or they're going to come here and just be in and go drink in Montclair or in North Arlington or something like that? I wanted to, at least if people are going to be here, I hope they're going to spend their money on that.
So there is a, some of our newer developments, there's a residential mandate, I'm sorry, retail mandate. So the work will be mixed use with retail on the first floor, three or four stories above that.
Awesome. And with, along with that, possibly expanding the rec sector to have adult programs. A lot of towns have adult programs, men's basketball, things like that, especially the basketball building over there. I think that'd be great, something we could look forward to in the future. And in lieu of public question number one on the ballot on Monday, on Tuesday, has, has the town taken a position on cannabis selling or nothing? Or you're waiting for...
So I don't tell people...
Some towns have had motor tor, or...
I don't tell people how to vote on the question, but I will tell you that we have been approached in Bellevue by different operators. I don't believe the council's against it. I believe some of our zoning actually permits it in certain zones, whether it's into a vertical cultural or vertical farming. I don't, yeah.
All right. And I'd just like to know what you're thinking about it, you know? And I really commend you guys for taking all these questions and giving us all this time tonight. So I appreciate it.
I'd like to explain it.
We have more people here doing the questions, we can show them.
I agree with you.
All right, so, thank you so much.
Sir?
Bill Willen, 15 Hoppus Street. Frank Fleishman recommended a resolution to investigate 2014. Order that investigation, just wanted to know if, if it was something like that.
It's not on the agenda, no?
No.
No, not on the agenda?
No. Well, that's, sorry. It's not, they put on a resolution. Not what we can do.
Doesn't seem that way.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir? I'm sorry, ma'am. I'll come back, though.
Good evening, council. And good evening to the administration members. I wanted to say it was very nice to see a lot of our residents from Bellevue here at our meeting, which occurs every two weeks. I wish they would come more often and not just when they have complaints. But I really wish that they would come out and get involved and learn what's going on in our town. We live in a great town. We have a great administration. They're doing a great job. 14 years of the previous administration was a nightmare for this town. And this administration is cleaning it up and doing a good job. And I only know that because I'm involved. So tonight, I want to say I was here two weeks ago. I brought a concern for the residents, not really myself, but from the residents, having to do with commercial vehicles being parked in residential streets overnight. I want to say I wasn't too happy with the mayor's response to me, but I know the mayor, and I know the mayor always does right. The concerns are raised to him. He always addresses them, and it's not him, it's team, or his administration. And he's got a very good administration. So shortly after being here, I received a phone call from a lieutenant from our Bellevue Police Department. And shortly thereafter, this issue of commercial vehicles parking in residential streets overnight, which is not allowed, has somewhat been remedied. Most of those vehicles are gone. There's still some of them out there, I'm sure, are going forward. We'll get to them. So tonight, I want to thank personally our councilman, John Tyree, who I brought the issue to first. I want to thank our chief, Mark, the chief of police. I want to thank his lieutenant, who reached out to me. And I want to thank our Bellevue Police Department. Our LEOs doing excellent job. They're always very respectful. They have no clue who I am, but yet, they always, always treat me with courtesy. And I believe that comes from the leadership of our department, our police department. So they are to be commended. I think this administration is to be commended. They're doing a great job. We're cleaning up, like I said, the mess left to them from the previous 14-year administration. So I want to thank you guys for doing good work on this. Please keep it up. The residents who's had to deal with the issue of these commercial vehicles taking up their spots, blocking their driveways, nuisance to the, to the neighborhood because of the morning. They, they start their cars off early, they're loud, they wake up the people, five, six, seven o'clock in the morning. They have no business being there. For the most part, a lot of them bought those vehicles right on their driveways, meaning that they had the police department, they were just parking in the shoes because they wanted to. So I want to thank you, mayor. I want to thank your administration. I want to thank the Bellevue Police Department. I want to thank their leadership. I want to thank their chief, Mark. I want to thank the manager. You guys are doing a good job cleaning up the mess left for 14 years. And some of the residents who get involved, they're familiar with it. I'm very thankful. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mary Ann Bobriato. I live at 164 Milton Street. I have a question. Do we still have inspectors in the town?
Do we inspect what?
People are putting their garbage out.
Yes.
Not supposed to be there. Okay. Like everyone else tonight, my family has been affected by layoffs and cuts in pay because of COVID. And when my taxes go up almost $1,000, getting increased in water bill, you really start to examine what is going on in the town. I do think that we could be doing more to clean up the town. You've heard a couple of residents speak about dog waste. You've heard residents speak about commercial vehicles. I have all those problems on my Little Dead End Street. I would like to thank the Department of Public Works. I did notify them that we had not seen a street cleaner in months. By very next time, we did have a street cleaner, they come on a regular basis. So I do recognize that when the proper departments are contacted, things are getting settled. But I think the job of calling the police should not be on the residents all the time for things like garbage that's out all the time, commercial vehicles. Yes, they can't be everywhere, nowhere there's a party going on. But I think that the quality of life in our town has been somewhat diminished in the past year that I've noticed. And so it pains me to have to pay this increase in both my water bill and my taxes. I think that in corporate America, so many employees have been asked to take, not take their raise this year because they are able then to keep more employees on. I think we need to do the same in the town. I think we need to look at where we can make cuts. We had no snow removal last year. We had no fireworks this year. Many of the rec programs were cut. There are a lot of budget line items that have not been used. So to see a $1,000 increase was just astonishing to me when I feel like we've lost a lot of services and a lot of things can be remedied in the town.
Sure. I understand the frustration. I am equally as frustrated. Mr. Iacono is on the receiving end of my calls, my text messages, my email. I think we've gotten the township, as employees go, in a decent place with regard to them being responsive. If I make a complaint or if a complaint comes into me via email or I take a picture of something and send it to Mr. Iacono, who then sends it to the right department, I think we've gotten them in the right spot of being responsive. I'm not necessarily happy that they're not proactive yet. I come from the private sector. I want them to be proactive. So I agree with you with the frustration that's there. I have that frustration all the time. Mr. Iacono is probably the only one that bears the brunt of my frustration when it comes to that, because as you can see and tell, I take most of the heat, which is okay, because I then will have a conversation with Mr. Iacono.
Everybody's pet cow. You send the letters.
I do. And I respond, and we've communicated email threat. So I just, you know, people think I don't, I respond to every single person that emails me.
And I find that most of your departments do as well. But as far as, I hesitate to call the police. I don't want to be that neighbor.
I know, I hear that all the time.
Nobody wants to be that neighbor. But I feel that, that people on my Little Dead End Street, 10 houses, there's garbage out every single day.
So that's not the big police. We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
But that, we, so we do have...
Cars, vehicles, every night, hydro blocked, every night, every night.
Our chief is here. He knows the Dead End on the road. So we'll definitely take a look at that, but it's not our police for garbage. Definitely have somebody that actually goes out specifically to do that. So if you call, that would be construction code. Where's John, is that construction code or health? Your mic's not on. Mayor, which street are you?
Milton Street, the dead end.
We'll send John there tomorrow.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mr. Gershio.
Jerry Gershio, Big Grove Street. Was this deficit in the water bill, didn't it show up in the 219 budget? Somebody?
I don't believe we were aware of it at that point, but Anthony or the...
Well, the reason I'm saying is Anthony said that the state wouldn't pass the budget because there was a deficit, the water bill, in the water department. Was there a deficit in the water department in 219?
There was a deficit every year, however, we had, when it was a deficit, there's only a couple of ways of making up, increase the taxes, or in this particular case, raise the water rate.
Well, how was it done last year?
In 2000 and...
Nineteen?
We made up the deficit by adding more on the tax, on the increase on the taxes.
Well, if you did that, then this money would have been paid off.
No, no, you're saying deficit, you're not talking about the specific deficit.
He's saying, he's saying the deficit of $1.6 million, I believe, was $200 that he's put in, that he had as a surplus or whatever. And the rest is $1.4 million that had to be paid to NORC, that still has to be paid, am I correct?
So let's just make sure we're all on the same page. Judith, Judith, something? Can somebody just put the numbers to bed once and for all? And if you have anything to say, Mr. Martino, you can chime in.
I'd like to explain it. If you look, if you look at the water budget from 2009 to 2020, there were increases. Increases in salaries, increases in materials, okay? There was increase in bond payments, interest payments on notes, actually. Because we were bonding in the utility for years, we're trying to get away from that, so we had an increase.
What do you mean you were bonding utilities?
You bonded for utilities to do certain things in the utilities, whether it be materials, so on and so forth. We did that in the past. So if you look at the budget, you will see an increase in payments on the interest for the bonds. The utility is allowed to bond for infrastructure, and we've done that, so any of the utility will do that.
So NORC hadn't given you a bill at that time?
It's not got to do with water bill, this is the utility itself. We bond for certain things, whether you're fixing mains or something like that, or you're bonding for materials. You're allowed to bond for the utility. So we bonded last year, so we had an increase actually in the interest.
My question...
I think we're doing two different things, I think Mr. Martino has this, hold on, what's that, Judith, I think? Mr. Martino, we're doing two different things, I think.
Just let me try to clear this up. There's two different amounts, there's $1.6 million. The $1.6 million, Judith, stop me if I'm wrong, the $1.6 million is for the water deficit, not deficit, but what we owe NORC from 2015, the end of 2015, when the contract expired till now.
So why aren't they sending you a bill over a year?
No.
No, they were sending us a bill for the old rate because we were out of contract.
And we were paying the old rate.
But the contract allows, we have to pay NORC their actual amount. So from 2016 till now, there's a $1.6 arrears that we owe NORC. That's one number.
And that popped up because we're just...
Everybody tries to jump in and say, okay, so it's $1.6 million, that is one number. The second number is a deficit for what NORC should have been paid for our water for this year. Meaning, we collected X amount of dollars, but we owe them Y amount of dollars. The difference between X and Y is $1.4 million. So that is not, they're not the same number, they're different numbers. It's a total of $3 million, am I right, Judith?
$1.6, $1.6.
Wait, we owe NORC $3 million?
Just wait a second, just wait. We owe NORC $1.6 million for the period of time from when the contract ended till now.
Good.
That's one number. In 2020, when they talk about a deficit of $1.4 million, that's $1.4 million just for this year between what we actually billed the customers in Belleville versus what we need to pay NORC. So yes, it's two different numbers, it's $3 million we owe NORC. One for the period of time from 2016 till now, and one for 2020, when we're billing, NORC is billing us one number, and we're collecting a different number from the residents. So it's $1.4 million deficit, which is what some of these residents were talking about as a one-time hit to make up that $1.4 million. The $1.6 is separate, so that's...
Let me just make sure.
How we're paying the $1.6?
It's four years that they were billing us the old rate, that's the $1.6 million. Now, when we want to get the new number, we already paid NORC, we're in October, let's call it. We already paid NORC ten months, but now for 2020, NORC has a rate that's already ticked up five times because we missed the first quarter. That difference is the $1.4.
Mr. Frank Antoni went over the numbers. He said, well, there's, it was five point some odd thousand dollars, five point some odd million dollars was due, but we're only collecting $3.9 million, which is the difference is the $1.4, Judith, am I correct?
Yes, and also expenditures went up on the water utility.
So what you're saying is we owe NORC $3 million, am I hearing this correctly? Not $1.4, $3 million.
So, so the idea is, yes, the answer to that question is, we don't owe NORC $1.4 million because, we don't owe NORC $1.4 million, we were short on the water utility, $1.4 million. So it doesn't all go to NORC. There's, like she said, there's bonded utility money that has to be paid, the interest went up, things like that. So it's not a total owed to NORC. We definitely owe NORC $1.6 million, but we're short $1.4 million on the water utility. And that's the difference.
The rates have been historically wrong. We've been charging, we've been paying out NORC more money than we're collecting from other...
And paying for other things more, like on the water utility. And things that are bonded to keep the system going, okay? It's not just about paying for water.
Bonding to keep the system going.
Well, you have, you have repairs, you have lighting, and you have...
You're allowed, when you're actually buying materials, the cost is very, very high, we're allowed to bond.
The system doesn't maintain itself, the township has to maintain the system. The cost of that is used, is bonded, which has to be paid off. So the $1.4 million, look, we're not talking about, you know, penny for penny here, we're using round numbers here. But when you're talking about $1.4 million, that's what the township was short on, what they had to pay out for the utility for the water, and it includes everything, it doesn't just include what's paid to NORC. $1.4 million short, that's the deficit for 2020. Then you talk about what's owed to NORC, which Judith said earlier, is bonded and has to be paid over time, $1.6 million. So yes, the answer is, it's a total of $3 million, not all of which is being raised immediately, okay? But it has to be raised. Now, the mayor said, they're examining it now so that, to make sure that ordinance that we passed not long ago is incorrect. There's no question in anybody's mind that it was incorrect. They now have to correct that. But the reality is, everybody's been thrown out, $1, $200,000, $1.6, $1.4, there are two different numbers.
But I've been told that the same thing happened in Bluefield, and Bluefield refused to pay the money to NORC. Now, is that true?
I don't, I don't believe that's true.
I don't believe that's true.
Bluefield, we can't operate on what people are told, what people read.
Well, I've cut this from a number of sources.
I can tell you many sources that aren't reliable. You know, we just, I can't...
I'm going to tell you something that I think is reliable.
I do need to wrap up, so if you could just sum up.
I'm going to tell you something that I think is reliable, and that is, I contacted a number of people in the Silver Lake section who get their bill directly from NORC.
Totally different, right?
Totally different, it's totally ridiculous compared to what everybody else is paying. I understand their minimum bill is like $10. So why is ours so high? This is ridiculous.
Jerry, I think you just heard the example of $3 million a day.
Is NORC price gouging this town?
No, this town was asleep for about six years and didn't care that NORC was charging us more money than we were collecting. Now we're fixing that.
But technically, we were paying then, five times the amount that NORC charged in Silver Lake. Then, before this rate!
Potentially NORC charges their own residents, including Silver Lakeers, during the north water infrastructure at one price. And when they sell their water to other municipalities, including Belleville and many other municipalities, they charge more money.
Five times the amount?
I, Jerry, I'm not going to argue that number, you're pulling that out of the air.
I'm not pulling it out of the air, I, there's a couple of people, they quoted their water...
You're out of your time, Jerry, you need to sum up.
Okay, you need me to sum up. Last thing I'll bring up, well, not the last thing, but I... Resolution number six, what is this? It doesn't say nothing here.
That resolution has to do with developers' contributions to the township for off-site improvements that developers give to the township. And in order to, in order to take that money and then spend it, a resolution has to be passed.
We're going to receive $52,000.
From this specific developer, this one case.
And just in very, very simple form, anytime the budget is adopted, and you receive money after the money, the budget's adopted, then you have to do this resolution, and specifically, if you look it up, tap the 159, allows the township taking money after the budget's already adopted.
Okay, and the last thing is, you brought up, Mr. Mayor, and that is, when you had the buyout, actually it was letting you step with our tax bill, you had a buyout, five people took it. It was a total of $110,000. And I said you bonded for $588,000, something like that, something crazy. And I said, why is there this difference? What's happening with the difference? And they said, it was because of time that had to be cashed in when they left. Now, I figured out, based upon what I was told is the maximums you could do, and the maximum time that all five could have cashed out was about $175,000.
That's not true.
Not true?
No.
I understand that the most you could have in vacation time, so one year carried over, and that civil service.
Since you're out of time, Jerry, let's not figure what you think, and let's let Mr. Iacono explain.
Right, I'm sorry, now, what's the maximum vacation, what's the maximum you can get for sick time?
Depending, depending on the bargaining unit that you belong to, depending on the year that you were hired, you can collect up to 50% of your annual salary on unused sick time.
50%?
50%.
And there's no maximum amount?
No.
Because I was told the maximum amount is $15,000.
I get it, Jerry, but we're not going anymore by what you're told, we're going to go by the facts.
Yes.
If you were hired after 1994, you cap out at $7,500, you're hired before 1994. In certain contracts, you get $15,000, and in certain contracts, you get 50% of your salary up if that's what your accumulated sick time.
So how much was paid out for these five people, told?
We bonded $500,000.
I know where you bonded, I'm saying, what did you pay out?
We bonded $500,000. It was pretty, it was probably breaking that number that we're talking about, they have to give you the exact number.
The bond amount was exactly according to the schedule that we forwarded to the bond attorney.
Because you did the bond first, then you had to buy it.
Well, you have to get the bond.
Money in the place.
Get the money.
Thank you.
All right.
See, nobody else in public comment, or has there been a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close, Paul.
We have a motion made to second close public comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're there. We still have a meeting tomorrow. Next item in the meeting is going to be item 10, which is resolutions. I don't have anything to pull. We have a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to move the consent agenda, third, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosmella, here. Kenyon?
Yes.
Razziano?
Yes.
Attori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes. Your business?
Yes, Mayor, listen, Steve, Robell, I have a couple of questions, if possible.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So, for Mr. Martino, I know that we have an ordinance about the repairing of street safety facilities, open it up. Is it possible to extend that to a curate defer, because I'm not sure what we are going to do? But I know we have something in there, can you forward that forward?
Mr. Councilmember Robell, I actually believe, when the mayor said that, but I didn't want to talk out of school because I don't have it in front of me, I actually believe that we, not long ago, changed that ordinance based on the percentage of, or the size of the opening of the street, they do have to pave the entire street. I will check it more closely for you because I don't have it in front of me.
The opening for the gas line is not, well, we can check it, but it's not...
I will check it, but I'm pretty sure that we did it for all utilities, not just PSE and G.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that if they, if they open it, open it for, under certain circumstances, and depending on the size of the opening, and it also has to do with how, the time period from which the last paving of the street was. So if it's a certain period of time that the street was newly paved, then they have to do it. So I don't think it's a blanket requirement, I think it also has to do, you know, Mr. Frank Antoni always complains that, you know, we pave a street and then they open it up, and it's no good anymore.
Which is precisely why when we do the lead land replacement, we're going to use streets that are already open.
Exactly, so I think that's, I think that's why, or that's, we did change the ordinance to reflect that if the street has been paved within a certain period of time, they have to repave the whole street. I just don't have it in front of me.
Can you look into that and let us know?
I can remember something like that, I just couldn't remember what it was.
I can, I'll look into it, and I'll send everybody an email so they know what the actual provision is. I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Anything else, Steve?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things for Mr. Iacono, and one of them was, I know we've discussed this before, before we got here, but it's the feasibility of interconnecting to another supplier, like if Jersey City or North Jersey. I just want to, see, I think that's, I think that's what happens in Bluefield. They have a feasibility of actually interconnecting with another water supplier. I don't know if we have that, but I'd like to explore it. The other is the feasibility of privatization of the water utility, this may be a possibility. Anything we can do to save money for ourselves, because like everybody else, we're all taxpayers, water go there.
So Steve, I've actually looked into that. The only other option that we had, NORC is basically the only game in town. Jersey City does come through Belleville at the reservoir, different pressures. It would cost us millions and millions of dollars to change, because if we made that connection, we're going to start blowing out lines everywhere.
Yeah.
Different water pressure.
So last thing is, my understanding is, you know, why we don't do monthly billing, because it would be, you know, basically, you're talking eight one bills a year, which would basically triple the cost. So I think I'd prefer to stay in quarters.
Okay, that's what we have now.
That's it, man, I'm good.
Thank you. Anybody else for your business? Could we have, that's it? That's it, I'm going to entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Motion made, and do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.